We are the back end. We're not far from the hall. Well, probably supposed to be four miles away. Four miles away. And stuff like that. That was in the world. I'm doing it. I'm doing it. I'm saying. 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 Hey Jim? 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 You want to close that? We won't need that. We won't need that. We're working on it. We're trying to do it. We're working on it. We're trying to do 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 it. Okay, well, I'm not all right with that. Like town meeting is town meeting. You know, I always tell you that I'm here. It's valuable people seeing your home. You're telling us how you're living. You're living. I'm not going to let most of them come in. I'm not going to let most of them come in. I'm not going to let most of them come in. I'm not going to let most of them come in. I'm not going to let most of them come in. I'm not going to let most of them come in. I'm not going to let most of them come in.
Folks, we're very close to restarting. So if you could find your seats. Thank you. 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 Yes, I understand. We're here, we have to say. We're talking. All right, go on to. Thank you. Good, thank you. My son, he's two, kind of started. And I said, oh, I'm going to have to start. Okay, Matthew, now. He graduated here. He's calling this one. Right, and then that's it. Yeah. Perfect. Um, I don't know who Matthew is. Matthew's four years young. Matthew's graduating, but, you know, he's got his little science. Oh, I didn't have any contacts. Just to talk to about what he's doing. And where, you know, how, you know. So, yeah, just talk about the field. And Matthew's thinking about what's right. Very cool. You see, like, the guy. You know that. You know that. So, yes, unbiased, though. You know he is. You know he is. But I've been out. Sorry. Yeah. Cool, good, sounds good. I do my last one. I haven't told you. But, you know, then I... We are just waiting for our evening session tellers to be sworn. So just a couple of minutes. It's like rainy, kind of grows out. Yeah. 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 Hey. I was trying to think one, but I didn't. So, yeah. 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 I bet. Yes, I did. She texted me a couple of times. Yes. Hello. Hello. Very well, thanks. And she moved up in the world. Yeah. 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 I think, um, I kind of go with the idea of the wild. I think some people like. Something else. Welcome back, everybody. The clerk has informed me that we have a quorum, which is fantastic. Tonight's tellers are Michelle Pilecki. There I go again with the glasses. Carrie Probst, Sally Hegarty, Michelle Hokinson, Kate Battles, Paul Desmond, Reed Probst, and Jack Battles. All are sworn, and we are at Article 22. Article 22 was on the...
Twenty-three. Right?
No, I think it's 22.
Twenty-two was on the... Sorry, 23.
Twenty, 23. Okay, look. Sixteen through 22 were passed as part of the consent agenda. All right? That's how we get to 23. 23 and 24 were on a consent agenda. They were held for what turned out to be an administrative reason. I'm told that the person who held them is no longer concerned. So if we were to just go straight to a vote on those, is that all right with the gentleman at the mic, or is there something you want to say?
I was going to move the article, but I will. I wouldn't describe it as unconcerned.
All right, so then let's put...
Still a little bit of concern, but after discussion with Jay Talaman, I'm going to...
Well, let's explain it to the folks then. So why don't we put those, let's put that motion, Article 23, on the floor. Just move it as printed in the warrant, and then we can just talk briefly about that.
I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Okay, does it receive a second?
Yes.
All right. And then I believe whatever discussion we're about to have will also apply equally to 24.
I think that's...
Go right ahead, sir.
Sure. So, under the Community Preservation Act, a town meeting article that appropriates funds, that article needs to be voted on by the municipality's Community Preservation Committee. We voted on articles, and the language in that article was changed when it was printed in the warrant. The phrase that I inserted in Article 14 was missing from this one, too. So we have some concern that it may not comport with, you know, MGL Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, because the language doesn't match. But after speaking with town council, frankly, we're not going to push the issue. These are bond payments that, you know, that we, the town has committed to make. But again, I wouldn't describe it as being unconcerned about this. We have a little bit of concern. That's what it is.
Okay, fair enough. Does anybody have any comment or question beyond that on 23? All right. Thank you. Article 23 requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your...
Is it seconded?
Oh, yeah, it was seconded. All those in favors, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 24, I believe, is the exact same story, but please go ahead.
Absolutely correct. So with the same preface, I will move the article as printed in the warrant.
Second, okay. Comment or question on 24? All right. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 25, Ms. Cook.
Ready? So John Westworth, that's the last way. Okay. Good evening, everyone, again. So Article... Will.
Is the mic on? There you go.
Now? Okay, good evening, everyone. So Article 25, I move the article as printed in the warrant.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. So last June, Hockington approached our select board to ask that we provide our water system infrastructure to deliver MWRA water through our water system pipes to a new water connection at the border of Southborough and Hockington. The reason for this request was that their municipal wells are currently contaminated with PFAs and other contaminants and are, can no longer provide potable water to their town citizens. We knew that the technical and contractual issues for this would be complex. The select board had executed a similar agreement with Ashland in 2017 to supply water to Ashland on an emergency basis only. However, this proposed agreement with Hockington is significantly different in that it will supply 100% of Hockington's public town water. Therefore, we needed to approach this request with a proper study and due diligence. The select board voted unanimously to attempt to provide the Hockington water simply to be a good neighbor, as long as we could put together a contract that would not be unfavorable to Southborough. When previously serving on the advisory committee, many of you know John Butler, standing beside me, he had done a thorough examination of the Water Department economics and was very familiar with the water system operation. He also had worked on many other projects with DPW. He came to us and volunteered to work on the analysis of the Hockington connection, and we accepted his offer to serve. We held a series of select board meetings that were open to the public with Mr. Butler presenting to discuss progress on the plan. All the work on this project has been in open session, non-executive session. The select board agreed to the terms it would be willing to enter into an intermunicipal agreement, also called an IMA, with Hockington to allow them to purchase the same MWRA water that Southborough currently purchases. I have been designated by the select board to work with our town council and Hockington's town council on the draft of the required contract. That contract is dependent on the passage of this article. Today, we're going to review the whole plan with you and seek your approval of a key piece of it to enable it to move forward. With that introduction, I'm going to let Mr. Butler take you through the status of the questions before us today.
Thank you. There's a slide set. Can we get that up? Okay, so I'm going to review with you the considerations that have gone into this thus far since I began working on this in July, and I'll take you through those. I hope, so can I have the next slide? Oh, I can control it here. Great. There's a great amount of detail that's available potentially, but I'm going to try to first summarize the whole picture in three slides for you, and then, I think, to present a little bit more detail that, I'll sort of peel back the onion, get a little more detail and a few more slides that are supplementary after that. There is a handout that contains two other slides that might answer some questions if people have them later on. Okay, so to begin here, the basic background of this is that we're proposing this project fundamentally because Hockington's water, oops, Hockington's water supply is contaminated with PFAs. PFAs are a persistent chemical that has been shown to be a carcinogen, and the EPA has recently tightened up the standards for that. Hockington did not meet the old standards, and the new standards was just have been promulgated by the federal government or even tighter. The consequence of that is very severe. Our neighbor to the south is not, people are not recommended to drink or cook with the water. People are recommended to use bottled water. It's a terrible situation, and although most of what I present tonight will be about the Southborough side of how we do this equitably for ourselves, I urge you to continue to consider throughout your deliberations on how to cast your vote, the predicament that our neighbors are in. They must have a new source for all their drinking water. It turns out that MWRA, whose aqueducts run to the north side of our town, through the north side of our town, has a huge extra and pure water supply. The, I'll get into more of that later on, but that's the basics of that situation. The best connection, all of the engineering says, between Hockington and the MWRA aqueducts at the north side of our town are through our piping network. That's because water engineers want systems to have redundancy in the pathways that the water can follow, and our network is a highly redundant network that can deliver water to Hockington. However, the quantity of water that Hockington needs to obtain from the MWRA is greater than our existing system could provide without amendments or changes to the system. It turns out that we've worked this out, and the engineering people have worked this out, so that those, that system expansion necessary to supply water to Hockington will also benefit us in the long term. And we'll get into that a little bit more as we go forward, but basically, all of the changes, about $6.3 million worth of changes that will occur on the Southborough side of the line are ones which eventually, over the next several years to the next 20 years, will be necessary here in Southborough, and those costs will be averted by this, by this, moving forward in this way. So the system expansion will benefit us in the long term. But many of the largest dollar items would not be required immediately. Again, we'll supplement that. So Hockington, as a result of the negotiations that have occurred since last June, has agreed to pay all of the costs of this project, plus in addition, pay for $1 million of near-term water projects that are not directly tied to providing water to Hockington, but were in our long-term water, in our water plan as needing to be done anyway. In the end, after the water supply is flowing to Hockington, MWRA will bill Hockington directly for the water that they take, and they'll be metering it at the border of Hockington, and we will bill Hockington for our costs of delivering the water to them. The largest component of that is electricity at the pumping sites at the aqueduct. Okay. So why are we presenting you with this warrant? As I said, Hockington is going to pay, in the end, pay for all the design and construction costs. However, because the full engineering design is being paid for by them with a single firm, we felt that the importance of this merited an independent or peer review of the engineering. That's a study done by a different firm that looks at the plan and verifies that it's a sound plan going forward from an engineering viewpoint. That, we felt as though that engineering firm must work, be hired by Southborough and work solely for Southborough because of the risk of conflict of interest with respect to the firm working for Hockington. I don't mean to imply by that that we question in any way the work that they're doing, but this is merely the prudent way for Southborough to proceed. So we need to hire and pay for that auditing engineering firm or the peer review engineering firm independently, and today, we're asking you to approve an appropriation from water reserve funds to pay for the audit. It has the significant footnote on it that after we do this work, this review, that Hockington will reimburse us for the costs of the review fully. But in order for it to be, have the degree of independence economically that we desire, we have to, we have to buy it ourselves and get paid, get reimbursed for it later so that this engineering firm is reporting solely to us. So I'm going to, again, this is the sort of conclusion of the overview section of this presentation. We're proposing this water project because we believe we need to rise to the occasion and help our neighbor, Hockington, but also because we worked this out so that the plan is good for Southborough, both in the near term and in the long term. I think it's also significant to realize that this situation cannot remain. We can't have Hockington become a Flint, Michigan of Massachusetts, and that's not going to be allowed to occur. So it's best that we solve this problem now cooperatively with Hockington rather than sort of try to stand in the way of a dire need and wait for someone else to find the solution that might involve our system anyway. So to summarize, before I sort of dive into the next level of detail, I just want to say that we'd ask you to vote for this appropriation if you think this project should continue through its... So I'm going to, again, this is the sort of conclusion, conclusion of the overview section of this presentation. We're proposing this water project because we believe we need to rise to the occasion and help our neighbor, Hopkinton, but also because we worked this out so that the plan is good for Southborough, both in the near term and in the long term. I think it's also significant to realize that this situation cannot remain. We, we can't have Hopkinton become a Flint, Michigan of Massachusetts, and that's not going to be allowed to occur. So it's best that we solve this problem now cooperatively with Hopkinton rather than sort of try to stand in the way of a dire need and wait for someone else to find the solution that might involve our system anyway. So to, to summarize, before I sort of dive into the next level of detail, I just want to say that we'd ask you to vote for this appropriation if you think this project should continue through its subsequent steps, and I'd list a few of those subsequent steps here. The contract is being worked on now. Everything that I tell you today about this potential agreement is already agreed in writing in the draft contracts that are moving back and forth between Hopkinton and Southborough. However, the contract is far from finished with regard to the subordinate details that need to be worked out. But everything I'm telling you about who's paying for what is already agreed upon in the drafts that are being exchanged. So there would be a contract, there will also need to be a review, which I'll talk about a little bit later, of a rebuilding of one of the water tanks here in town. Then there would be the final design and the design review, which will occur concurrently and should take about 18 months from the, 12 to 18 months from the time that Hopkinton begins the final design process, which would probably kick off in June of this year or something like that. So that would be the next step. And concurrently, Hopkinton will need to obtain state approvals from, from the DEP and from the MWRRA, and, and create a contract with MWRRA to purchase water from them, and then the, and then the construction phase will ensue, which will take a while longer than that. The whole process is going to take several years to be completed, and so it's, it's important for Hopkinton, of course, that we get going, that it get going as soon as it can. If you, if you, if you vote no tonight, then we're going to try to listen to what your concerns are and figure out how they can be addressed and come back to you. But we hope that you'll vote yes. Okay, so I'm now going to move into, some of this will be slightly redundant with things that I've said, but I hope to fill you in on a little bit more detail in this section here. So the first, I'm going to take up these topics in order, which I think are things that, at the first level, one might want to understand about this before casting a ballot on this matter. So one of the first things that we encountered in looking at this was sort of what's going on in the Southborough water system as a whole. The somewhat surprising fact is that for the last 18 years, the water usage in Southborough has been declining slowly. And this is despite the fact that population has increased about 6% in that time period, so that as a result, there's been a very sharp drop in per capita water consumption here in Southborough. No matter how one measures that, these facts stand out. So if you take the total amount of water that the town has used in 2004 and divided by the population, and you do that in 2019, then it's down by a large amount, as you see here, 125, almost 125 gallons to 75 gallons per capita. So there's been a big decline. As you may be saying, yeah, that's because my prices went way up, which is true, and it does appear that, it does appear that the question which we didn't know the answer to back at the beginning of this time period, when I was working on water issues for the Advisory Committee, which was, would, would there be a change in buyer behavior if the prices went up? And the answer appears to have been yes. So the side effect of that is that we are not right now under pressure to expand the system right now to, in order to supply enough water. But there are a number of characteristics of a water system beyond just can it supply the water? And, and so we have, in particular, we have maintainability issues with our system today. The system that we have in place today is divided in half roughly along an east-west boundary that runs through the middle of the town, with the two halves of the town having the water storage system at different elevations. So we have a high zone, which is to the west side of town, and a low zone, which is predominantly to the east side of town. And because those water levels in the tanks that serve those sides of town are not the same, they can't really share effectively the storage. So the side effect of this is that the, the single tank that is on the west side of town, the high side on Tower Road, is very difficult to maintain. It's the only tank we have on that side, and therefore, taking it down for its periodic maintenance, which is roughly every 25 years, is very difficult because we don't have any other tank there. So this, this division of the town into high, high-low zones creates maintenance, maintainability problems for us, and in addition, we don't have, we don't have the recommended amount of adequate, of water storage in the system as a whole that would be recommended by rules of thumb for the water engineering business. This change that we're contemplating here eliminates the two zones and creates a single zone across the town, which will have great benefits for maintainability of the system for the long term. And so I say that, for example, the tanks, the tank changes that we're proposing are ones that we, we wouldn't do right now, certainly, but we probably would need to do in the 10 to 20-year-out timeframe because it'll, it's, it's really, the system is deficient at the present time in that respect. And these, of course, will come to us through this proposal at no cost to us. Now I want to say a few things about the MWRRA water supply. In, in some of the public, publicly attended Select Board meetings, these were natural questions which arose, and I think it's important to address them. The, the first point is that oddly enough, MWRRA has a huge excess water capacity. It's worth noting how miniscule the town of Southborough's water demand is relative to the MWRRA. We're a little less than 1/200 of the water that goes through the aqueducts to the north side of town is diverted to our use. The MWRRA excess capacity is 37 times the, the demand that Hopkinton will place on the system if Hopkinton's usage was at its peak. So they have, the MWRRA roughly believes they have 100 million gallons per day of excess capacity, and the peak demand that we're structuring this project for is 2.7 million gallons per day for Hopkinton. A side effect of those conditions for MWRRA is that they are actively seeking new municipal customers. They have all this water, they want to sell it, just like anyone would. And so they, they are right now waiving their former connection fees to new municipalities so that they can sell some of their excess capacity. So that's one important factor behind this whole thing. The other is that there are no other good sources of this water for Hopkinton. The filtering technology that exists today cannot meet the long-term needs, the long-term purity standards for these carcinogenic PFAs. So the solution of filtering today appears to be out of reach permanently. There's no other way to obtain this kind of quantity of water. Well, well-based communities around us, like Westboro and Holliston, no one has extra well capacity enough to serve some other town. Lastly, I note that one other community faced this, a severe PFA problem before the new standard, the newly emerging standards, they hit the old standard adversely, was Bedford. And Bedford, Massachusetts, today obtains all of its water from MWRRA through a similar connection through the town of Lexington. There are some differences there, but we've examined those there, both their contractual arrangements, and I've spoken to their DPW chiefs, and that system has been working for about 30 years. Only in the last 15 years has it produced all of the water for Bedford because of the PFA problem. Another important point which, which emerged from our public conversations was whether global warming would be a problem. We, of course, frequently hear about drought conditions being adversely affected by global warming around the world and around this country. However, in Massachusetts, precipitation aggregates over the last 50 years have, over the past 50 years, have gradually been increasing, and that is attributed retrospectively to the effect of global warming. Furthermore, the forward-looking outlook for rainfall or aggregate precipitation, both snow and rain, is for slow increase in that precipitation rate, so that by the end of this century, we're expected to be receiving about three inches per year of additional precipitation over that of the historical baseline for the last 30 years. And so I think that although the situation fundamentally is that global warming makes dry areas drier and wet areas wetter, and we're kind of in, towards the wet side of that as a whole, and the expectation is that the past trend will continue so that we should not have a fundamentally, fundamental problem emerging from global warming in that respect. Now, the last point is that if MWRRA were to impose drought-induced limits at some point, we would not be in the enforcement business with respect to Hopkinton. Hopkinton will become an MWRRA community, they will have an allocation of water from MWRRA, and we're just the delivery party in this arrangement, and the, and the, and any limits that were to be applied would be applied separately by MWRRA to both towns and not come out of our waters, of our water allotment. However, for perspective, it's, I, I had this slide originally saying we've never had drought restrictions from MWRRA, but I should say that in no one's memory that I could find have we had drought restrictions from MWRRA. So if there have been, ever been any, they go back many decades ago. So there haven't been any, we haven't had drought restrictions at least in the last 30 years. It's not impossible, however. Okay. Now, let's say a little bit about the planned construction here. The construction is, can only be characterized with respect to this water system as extensive. The, the current Oak Hill tank, so you may be aware that there is a, a water storage tank on Oak Hill Road. It's barely visible, although it is visible from the road, I believe, in the winter. It's not visible when leaves are on the trees. The current one will be replaced. The increase in height on the same footprint, or on the same site as the old tank, the old tank will be removed and a new tank built. The new one will be between 23 and 27 feet higher, which is about 1/3 higher total. The nominal, the nominal capacity of the tank will change from 2.7, from 275,000 gallons to 1 million gallons, but the, the operating effective capacity change will be greater than, than reflected by that ratio because the top portion of the tank is the portion of the tank which can be effectively used while maintaining pressure at households. And so as the top part grows, the, the fraction that's usable functionally becomes relatively greater. So it's probably on the order of three times the functional capacity compared to what's there now. The existing tank, get ready, was built in 1930. It was maintained, it is maintained, I don't mean by, to say by that that it's sort of going to fall over. It is checked regularly, and it was, went through a full maintenance cycle in 2012, but it is very old. The, these ones at the top here, which say, on the topic, water system expansion in Southborough, the, these are all the ones that are implicated by the need to provide water to Hopkinton. In other words, in one way or another, if we were getting into the business of delivering this water to Hopkinton, the, these things are, are necessary or would be, or are affected as part of that program. So we need large, some larger pipes in order to get the water there effectively. They, and I'm going to show you a map of these in a minute. Parkerville Road, south of Route 9, Southville Road at the 85 intersection, and the part of the deal with Hopkinton is that we're not going to patch the roads after we dig those up. We're going to do curb, curb-to-curb repaving. Again, that's all, Hopkinton has agreed to pay for all of that. The, the plan calls for the, for the tank that's on Overlook Drive to be removed. The, the engineering plan is at a preliminary stage right now, but the engineers tell me that that's the right thing to do. If you're hoping that it be removed, I should probably qualify my statement in some way. But, but that is the plan right now, that that would be removed. That tank and the Oak Hill Road tank are in the current low zone, but the whole system will be converted to one water level instead of the current two water levels. I mentioned that before, and this is a significant long-term benefit to us. It's been proposed that we do, that we build another tank or we do something to supplement our storage at least since 2007, but because of our declining usage, we have put that off and put it off, but we would certainly need to do it, and this will get it paid for without us, costing us anything. The, in addition, the, the Skylar Fairview neighborhood, currently, some customers there, some residents there have low water pressure, basically because of the altitude of their homes, and this will create, we will create a pumping substation to solve that problem, but also will increase what's called fire flows. Fire flow is what you can get out of a hydrant at the same time. These, these changes altogether will not require any easements, and they're all being paid for by Hopkinton. We, because of the, some disruption in the road openings that are necessary, as well as the neighborhood of the Oak Hill Road tank, we asked Hopkinton to provide us with some compensatory project funding for projects not tied to the Hopkinton capacity increase, and the, and that, and that Hopkinton pay for $1 million of that compensatory projects, which are our own projects. These projects are ones which we certainly would want to undertake within the next five years. So those are near-term, very near-term projects that we would be doing anyway, and that Hopkinton has agreed to fund. And these are in effect compensation for the construction inconveniences in Southborough. The project list for that has candidates, but, and I could list those for you, but they are not finalized at this point in time. They involve basically piping improvements at various places in the system that we would need to do anyway fairly soon. The, I should say, however, all of this, all of these changes have been in the Water System Master Plan that has been updated regularly over the last 15 years, the most recent addition of which was completed about one year ago. So all of these kinds of changes that benefit Southborough are not, are anything but pulled out of a hat. When I was working on water system issues and advisory in 2008, we were dealing with, maybe we need a new water tank then, so this proposal would finally get that done. All right, so next, just let me just show on the next slide here. Okay, so I just want to show if I can here where, so here is, now you can't hear me. Here is the Parkerville, I hate to call it this, dig site. This is the road, this is where the road will need to be excavated to install larger pipes in this section of Parkerville Road between Route 9 and just north of the Middle Road intersection, I think it's Middle Road. And then the other area is down here, just at the, almost at the Hopkinton border in the Southville Road 85 intersection area. We need bigger pipes. This, this also shows some of the other aspects of this, but those don't involve, well, of course, the Oak Hill, Mike, I can't see this well enough here. The, the Oak Hill tank is here.
John, take, yeah.
So the, the Oak Hill Road tank.
You're still, you gotta, you gotta.
Ah, yes.
There you go.
Two, you know, two hands at once is a challenge. Okay. So this shows the, this does show the other, there are upgrades to the pumping stations here, this is the tank that's going to come down, this is the other pumping station. The pumping stations upgrades are. The pumping stations upgrades are they're entirely inside the existing buildings, however. So that's mainly, I wanted to show you where the roads have to be excavated here and the and the and the tank is on Oak Hill Road. Okay. Okay, let's continue to another topic that I think one would reasonably want to know something about, the key terms of the agreement. So, you know, a piping, a water system, you know, somewhat like an airliner, you know, if you if you build if you build an airliner that's designed to carry one-hundred-and-sixty people, you can't sort of come along and say, oh, let's put two-hundred-and-fifty people on it because it's just does not designed to do that. So this design is designed to provide a maximum of two-point-seven million gallons per day to Hopkinton. That is, that is about fifty percent of headroom over their recent usage maximums. And an important characteristic is that we're not we're not committing and we can't commit to more than that because we simply don't know if the and we're not investigating whether the system could provide more than that. So that's that's one important characteristic of the of the agreement. And then another one is basically that Hopkin Hopkinton pays us for pays us or directly to the contractors for all the design and construction costs. They reimburse us for this peer review, which you're going to vote on, which you which you we're going to call for your vote on, and they reimburse us for curb-to-curb street resurfacing, which which we will do. And then as after the water starts to flow, we will bill them quarterly for the cost of delivering the water and the cost of maintaining the capacity to deliver two-point-seven million gallons per day. Those are those are different costs. One is kind of measured by the gallon and the other is measured by what fraction of the system you use. And then they're going to pay up to one million dollars of unrelated improvements, those near-term things we need to do anyway, to our system. However, MWRA will bill Hopkinton directly for the water they use. The contract, when it eventually gets signed, will be a twenty-five-year term, and all of the foregoing points, these major points are agreed to at this point in time, but there's there's a big mass of of details to be worked into the agreement that are not completed yet. Concluding observations, it's just by chance that we happen to be located where two gigantic aqueducts move underground through the north side of our town, providing and being a gigantic clean public water supply. And we are between that public water supply with immense capacity and a town that can't drink its water. I'm saying to you that that gap that prevents Hopkinton from getting that water will not remain. It will be solved somehow, and my firm believes it's best that we solve it cooperatively, working with Hopkinton, as we've been trying to do. I don't think that we will get a better deal than the one you're looking at today. It involves about six-point-four million dollars of improvements to the Southborough system, which are benefit to us and which we would gradually need to do over the next twenty years, and we won't need to pay for under this system. And so I think in the bottom line on it is that we will thereby help our neighbor who desperately needs it and help ourselves as well. So that that brings me to conclusion, and I thank you, and I guess we'll take questions if there are some.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Butler. Comments or questions? We'll go right here to microphone one, please.
Karen Moggeridge, fifteen Parmenter Road. Is the financing of this all going to be within the confines of the water fund? And I thought you maybe were going there when you talked about the compensatory monies, but the things that you mentioned all seemed within the water system. And I guess the reason I ask is because many of us have well water, aren't within the water budget, and just wondering if any of these monies would go towards a more general fund.
The so to be clear, the the only thing that we are asking to temporarily withdraw from the Water Reserve Fund is the amount that we're asking to for a vote on tonight, which is the two-hundred-thousand dollars for the for the engineering peer review. And that's because those those that company that does that work needs to report solely to us. All of the rest of the all of the rest of the items will be are either reimbursed to us but will not go are not expected at this time to go through that, although that that could turn out to be the convenient place to to do that. But we can, we should be able to get those. The only thing we're tonight that we are looking for and that is firmly planned to be taken from Water Reserve Fund and then replaced into Water Reserve Fund is the engineering peer review. And as for benefits for all, everything about this proposal here and the plan going forward is for the part of the water system. There's there's they're they're not paying for tennis courts or anything else that we might like. And so if you're only a well-water user, I'm afraid that we we don't have anything anything to promise for you tonight.
Understood, and I see no reason not to support this and encouraging, you know, fully do support it, but just the road construction, other things, administrative costs are all going to come at some expense of other people in town. But it was just a wondering if that was being considered. Thank you.
Over here.
John Bottalini, four, wire circle. John, maybe you can, I I thought I heard you say something about Ashland, because I know Ashland is MWI water, and we are. So are they two connections to Hopkinton or just one or?
Yes, so the question is about Ashland. We do have an existing agreement to supply MWRA water to Ashland, but only under exceptional circumstances. So that and and the agreement was signed in two thousand and seventeen, so going on six, it'll be six years in in June that it ago there was signed. They have not yet taken a drop of water under that agreement. And that's because the DEP, mass DEP requirement is that they're not allowed to draw water through that connection unless their water table that feeds their wells in Ashland drops below a certain measured level. And they've never met that condition in the last six years or taken any water underneath that agreement. So this is totally different because Ashland's wells are not contaminated, Hopkinton's are. Hopkinton needs all of their water replaced, and this would be an this proposal that we're bringing forth now would be an every day, all their water supply through from MWRA, whereas Ashland in five years hasn't taken a drop. Now, you may remember that back in eleven, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, there was mention here of a of the of the use by Ashland of temporary connections because the drought circumstances then, we put in temporary connections to allow them to get water and DEP permitted it. But that motivated putting together this permanent agreement with Ashland, which but the permanent agreement stands, never has yet taken any water under it. Does that answer your question, John?
It does. I've got a couple other things here. The the way our water works, we pay the MWRA, and then the town of Southborough distributes the water and they bill us. Now, the way this is going to work is the water, the water's going to go through a main or some pipe, and then they're going to put a meter on somewhere, I assume down on Route eighty-five.
Yes, you've got it. That's correct. The way MWRA will have a meter at the Hopkinton Town Line, will measure how much water Hopkinton takes, and will bill them directly for the water. However, there's cost of us moving the water to the Hopkinton Town Line. The dominant piece of that is pumping electricity to get the water out of the aqueduct across town. So we will be billing Hopkinton also for not for the water, but for the cost of delivering it. It's a little like, you know, where UPS and MWRA is Walmart or something like that, you know, we're in the delivery business here.
Okay. And then the the last thing, and I think Karen did, I I built over in Hopkinton, seventy percent of Hopkinton is has wells, they have their private wells. They don't have a water system like us at all. So a homeowner has an artesian well, which I, from what I understand, seventy percent, I've got two brothers live over there, their wells aren't contaminated at all. What they have is the town water comes out of a a shallower aquifer, and that's contaminated. So about thirty percent of the town would have to replace their water or would be pick up this, not not a hundred percent.
So, John, I had to correct you just that it's sixty, about sixty-five percent subscription to town water in Hopkinton today, and thirty-five percent is on private wells only. There, of course, is always the possibility, as there is here in Southborough, of people who have double, who have a well, their private well and town connection, but Hopkinton tells us that their system has penetrated sixty-five percent of the residential population of of Hopkinton right now. So they're much lower than we are. We are in the ninety percent range in Southborough. So your contrast between the two towns is correct.
So I must have got the numbers wrong, but anyway.
It's okay.
I'm in favor of this, that people are in trouble, we have to do something, and it seems like it would be the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Through the moderator, good evening. My name is John Westerling, and I'm the Director of Public Works for the town of Hopkinton, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Okay, hold on one second, sir.
We were going to introduce him.
Well, he just did. Let me just very quickly, we don't, we don't, no fault of your own, we don't have you on our list, so public, say it again, town, Hopkinton what, Public Works Director?
Director of Public Works.
Okay. It would seem like the input of this gentleman would be relevant.
Yes, we do have him on the list, right, Mark? We're supposed to have him on the list? Okay, okay.
Did I read his name at the beginning of this meeting?
No.
You added it during the break. So as I say, he was not on the list that I read during the meeting, and I'd like to get him on it now with a show of hands that we're willing to hear from the Hopkinton DPW Director. Thank you very much. Please, sir, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, and I'm happy to be added. Thank you for that. And I'd just like to extend my thanks to the Select Board, Town Administrator, Mr. Purple, and Mr. Butler for the work that's been done thus far. I stand before this town meeting asking respectfully that you consider approving Article twenty-five that will allow Hopkinton to make its connection to your system so that we can purchase water from the MWRA. Hopkinton has the two-hundred-thousand dollars readily available to reimburse Southborough for this peer review that's proposed in this article. Hopkinton has an immediate need to connect to the MWRA that is based on both water quality and water quantity issues. For water quality, as you've heard, our water supply exceeds the maximum contaminant level for PFAS. Because of that, we have Hopkinton residents that cannot drink or cook with our water, and they, based on the recommendations from the DEP. So we have Hopkinton residents that have to purchase bottled water if they are either pregnant, nursing a baby, if they have a child under one year old, or if they have a compromised immune system. So connection to the MWRA will alleviate those health concerns and will allow those residents to be able to use the public water supply because the MWRA water sampling shows that they have either trace, excuse me, trace or no detectable limits for PFAS. Regarding water quantity, the effects of global warming put a tremendous strain on our resources, and it becomes more difficult for us to provide our daily demands for water supply. Our aquifers do not replenish as quickly as they used to, and in spite of conservation measures that we put in place, we still can't supply the average daily needs for our residents and businesses. Connection to the MWRA will alleviate those concerns about water quantity, and Hopkinton residents and businesses will have the water supply to support their basic needs. Hopkinton has worked with your leaders to draft an intermunicipal agreement that has been mentioned, and that defines the proposed connection and the mitigation of impacts on your neighborhoods and roads. That agreement will ensure that Hopkinton carries the entire cost of the project and also supports other water-related projects up to one million dollars. So on behalf of the residents of Hopkinton, I respectfully ask that this town meeting consider voting in favor of this Article twenty-five so that the residents of Hopkinton may purchase MWRA water, which meets and exceeds all DEP health standards. Thank you.
So I would, I would just clarify that what you're voting on for this article is obviously a necessary step, but you are voting to authorize the expenditure of engineering review that will be reimbursed. Hypothetically, that engineering review results in this is not a good idea. I don't know. So it's you're not, you know, there's no guarantee this project goes forward just based on tonight, but obviously, if we don't pass tonight, you know, it likely will not go forward. So with that clarification, we'll stay on this mic, please.
You're up.
Oh, I'm up. Is everybody up? Good evening. First of all, having a neighbor in deep trouble and our having the ability to respond is a.
We need a, we need a name and address, please.
Chris Robbins, thirty-nine, Parkerville Road.
Thank you, sir.
No, I just want to say anybody's in this kind of a cross crisis, bravo for a town that's willing to stand up with its its fellow community to help in this dire situation. I wanted to ask three questions in relation to this issue. It seems like it's coming almost at the last minute, they're in a desperate mode. What's the historical history of the water problems? I've heard that this has been an ongoing issue or concern in Hopkinton, and what can we learn from the lessons learned so we're not responding what appears to be a climate challenge and groundwater challenges that perhaps are just beyond our foresight or insight? So what are the lessons we can learn? I don't think there's any guarantee. We can talk about all the water that the MWRA has, but every time I pick up a newspaper, reservoirs seem to be getting smaller. So what drives, what what can we learn so we're ready? The other issue is, we keep hearing about climate warming and change. It's not that we don't believe it, we have examples, but what specifically are the sources we're using to make those decisions? Who are the experts that were reading the data to get the information that applies to Southborough and the Greater Metro West? So where's the data sources coming from? Who are the leaders who are giving us this data? Who in our departments are taking this data from a source and using it and asking us to make these very important decisions? The other key thing is, we always hear, I don't know, my parents grew up during the war, and everything was about conservation, and I think we got away from it. And today, now more than ever, what are the specific conservation guidelines that this town has? Now, I've got well water, and I just feel very lucky. I I went down deep, and that pump hasn't stopped, but it could stop tomorrow. But I I think it's important that there are rigorous conservation efforts to not only protect our homes, but our fire department needs. So anyways, I think we've got to have the data, who's giving us the data, how are we making, what are we basing our decisions on, who's that information coming from so we can avoid something like what Hopkinton regretfully has had to deal with?
So the slides seem to have gone off here, but if I can answer your question about the two sources of information with regard to the adequacy of supply. First of all, the MWRA measures their own water movement themselves, so they are the source of the of the statements that I provided to you about the excess supply. I will note that Sam Stivers of our Select Board is a member of the Advisory Board of the MWRA, so we sort of have a direct line into MWRA through his his endless work on behalf of the town. But the with respect to the projection that I cited, about three inches more per year over over the balance of this century, the. the balance of this century, the source of that is on the slides, oh, here, we're back up. So this is the, I thought someone might ask a question like that. So here's the underlying data source. It's some, it's a long name. The Massachusetts Climate Change Clearinghouse of the Northeast Climate Science Center of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. That, I'm sure that that pronounces to some wonderful acronym, but I don't know what it is. The, so that is the, that Massachusetts agency, your tax dollars at work, projects the increase that I talked about. But I also did find essentially the same, this is the most local and science-based projection that showed up in the course of my work, but also the same projection essentially exists for the northeast as a whole from the federal government, from the Environmental Protection Agency. So those are the, those are the sources of the information I provided to you about the effects of climate change and from the MWRA capacity.
Thank you. Let's go over here, please.
Yes, hi. Chris Slatter, 52 Oak Hill Road. So I would be an abutter to the proposed water tower on Oak Hill. I want to thank Mr. Butler for his work on this project. I think it's a good deal for us, and I think it's the right thing to do. However, so my concern is not with the opportunity to help Hopkinton, it's with the process that's played out to date and what we're being asked to vote on today. I do want to get straight that this is a highly complex proposition. It's unprecedented in Massachusetts. Despite Mr. Butler's example, there are no instances of smaller towns supplying larger towns through the MWRA. We're already on the hook for supplying, as he described, 1 million to Ashland, now 2.7 million to Hopkinton. So that's two towns, two contracts, and just to quote the document on our town's website, any fundamental miscalculation could be very disruptive and costly to Southborough. Right? So it is a very disruptive project, let's make no mistake about it. Over multiple years, we're talking over a mile of water main replaced, road closures, noise, traffic, countless hours of time from our boards and our town personnel to support this, address projects that wouldn't be needed for five to 10 years, maybe more. So it's a, it's a pretty serious project here that we're considering, despite the positives. And all of this, to date, is based on the recommendations of a, professional recommendations of a company that's representing both Hopkinton and Southborough. Right? So they're playing both, representing both sides. They have a strong financial interest in this project moving forward. So that is why it is critical that the independent review is conducted, which is what we're voting on today. In 2017, we actually spent dozens of hours, tens of thousands of dollars with this company to recommend a new water tower on Fairview Hill. So that was just sort of six years ago. They didn't even consider at that time switching to a single zone. So that makes me a little concerned about some of the recommendations there. So we need to get this independent review done. To date, in my view, despite the Select Board meetings, we've done this with very little and insufficient public input. No public hearings, no engagement with the abutters. The Public Works Planning Board back in June was asked to take up this issue and hold public hearings. I think maybe they've had one meeting, certainly not a public hearing. So somebody sort of behind the scenes is right now negotiating that IMA with Hopkinton. It's actually available on their website. However, as of Wednesday, this past Wednesday, the Select Board had not even seen it on our part, and admitted that in the meeting. There are some, some of the things in that contract, the draft, it is a draft, are a little bit concerning. One is that there's a statement that construction will proceed under Hopkinton's supervision. Right? So we need to think about that. $1 million for water projects that Mr. Butler mentioned, they do require, some of those that are listed, easements on private property. And we're on the hook for completing those projects within five years. So we need to think about which projects are included. And also, there's no restrictions on the height of this Oak Hill tower whatsoever listed in the contract as it stands. So these are really important issues that we need to reflect on as a community. And that comes down to sort of my final point here, is that can you give us assurances as this moves forward that abutters and the community will be engaged to a greater degree than they have been? And can you commit to us that you will not sign the IMA until this independent study has been completed? We've had a chance to review it as a community and weighed in on the design of this project. Thank you.
Ms. Cook, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So the contract is being negotiated by me with Mr. Butler's help, directly with Hopkinton's equivalents. The draft IMA that Hopkinton publishes, far from done, has several things that were incorrect in it, so I wish they hadn't done it, because it wasn't ready for anybody to look at. So we absolutely have work to do on that. We're well aware of what needs to be changed to bring that to fruition. The Select Board is going to hold a meeting with the abutters to make sure that the abutters on Oak Hill especially understand this project, understand the effect of them. We are waiting to get confirmation from our ZBA as far as whether we've got the ability to raise the height without their approval, so we've got to get that done first. So we are absolutely planning on doing that. The one thing that you mentioned, everything you said was great, but I can't remember everything you said, but the thing you said the last, as far as, we'd bring it back and wait for the independent peer audit to be done, that's not correct. That independent audit is going to go hand in hand with the actual design. It's not going to wait to the end. They're going to look at things as they go, so they don't wait to the end and have to go back and change the whole thing. As you said, the reason we are doing this is because our engineering firm has worked with Hopkinton on these designs, so they have worked for both towns. That was done because our firm knew our system, and it was felt that they would be the best to actually put these plans together. But we do intend to have a meeting very soon to make sure the Oak Hill neighbors understand the impact of the taller tower in their neighborhood.
If I might also, I also, you know, I agree with a lot of the last speaker, and probably the, although I was not aware that those words were on the website about the complexity of this project, they could very well be my words. Because when I saw this thing coming down the pike in June, the importance of it to our neighbor and the complexity of it for us were the two things that caused me to want to volunteer to help with it, because I knew that probably the amount of work it would take would outstrip what any one member of our Select Board could possibly devote to it. So, yes, it's a, it's a big thing for our water system. It contains many things that we know that we have needed for a long time. So for example, the fact that PAR pitched building a new water tower in 2017. Essentially, the issue of more storage has been around for a long time, but because of our declining water usage, we've never stepped up to deal with it. But we have a 1930s tank that isn't much use, and it, and really, we should enlarge the storage and replace it. So these are all things that we've known we've needed. The $6.3 million of beneficial work here in Southborough are things that we've known for a long time that we've needed, but we've put off because the pressure wasn't there for us to do them, because our usage rates were slowly declining. So, yes, it's a complicated project, and it has a lot of moving parts, and, but they are parts, many of which have been planned for, for a long time. So on balance, yes, that's, those are things that are correct, but I think that we can get through this, have a much better water system at the out, at the conclusion of it, that has a lot of corrections that we've needed for a long time, and at the same time, help a neighbor who's in desperate need, and do so at no cost to us. So, and what we need, as we've, as we've said, and as the drift of the last speaker's remarks is, we need to have a fully independent engineering review so that we know that this plan is sound without an admixture of any conflict of interest with Hopkinton, and that's what we're asking you to vote on tonight.
Thank you. Go right over here.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. I want to thank Mr. Butler for his work on this. This is a happy occasion where we can do the right thing and do well by it, so I'm wholeheartedly in favor. The question I have is, are there other communities that might be coming to us in the future looking for something similar?
Well, I would say, based on the geography, probably not, because Framingham already has its own connection. Ashland has this connection which can be used under drought conditions. Hopkinton is the one that is really, you know, in the perfect situation. There is the possibility of towns to the south of Hopkinton. Frankly, the new EPA guidelines on PFAS are, I don't know all the communities that may, that may potentially need, need to find new sources, but from the geographic situation we see right now, we have one town that is, from its geographic layout, and we make the most sense to supply water to it. It has a severe contamination problem, and we happen to lie between them and the solution.
Thank you.
Right over here.
Hi, my name is Joe Palmer. I live at 158 Parkerville.
I'm sorry, Joe Palmer.
Joe Palmer. I live at 158 Parkerville.
Okay.
I happen to be on Capitol, as well as 21 Highland and the newly formed Pilot Committee. As a Capitol member, I'm also concerned with the burden that this may place upon other infrastructure in the town, like roads, in terms of spurring extra capacity for building in Hopkinton. But why I'm standing here is because, as a person that lives on Parkerville on that side, a lot of my neighbors and I were on wells, so won't be affected by this in general. But that road is generally unsafe for child traffic, as it is with no sidewalk as a feeder road to the school. And people were talking in the meeting earlier today about how they felt about this road. Why invite them to come over to Parkerville on that side, feeding from Route 9 to the pike, and tell me how they feel about how safe it is? And I would like, as a curb-to-curb replacement of our road, I think it would be justified for the neighborhood over there to get a sidewalk with the new street, as we are going to have our road torn up. And in the next three to five years, if that happens, that sets up for that side of Parkerville not to have a sidewalk for 15 to 20 years, if it's not put in with that road, because sidewalks are best done when they put in roads. So if we're going to tear up that side of Parkerville, I think it's in the best interest of the neighborhoods and the town to put in a sidewalk at that particular point. Thank you.
All right. Right over here.
Will Warren, 6 Sunrise Drive. I'm very much in support of this. I think it's great that we can help Hopkinton, but I do have two questions. One is, when the big project is done and the money needs to be paid, will all of the borrowing for this work, including the work done in Southborough, be done through Hopkinton, so that it hits their credit rating and not ours?
Yes.
Okay. And the second question is, about how many homes are currently affected in Hopkinton by this problem? And the reason I ask that is that right now, I would imagine that those homes are, their property values are depressed because of this. It would be a real hassle to buy a house there. When they solve this problem, they're going to bring all of those homes that they have, that have the problem now, will have their property value go up. Has anybody looked at the potential impact on Southborough property values when the market becomes more populated with desirable properties?
No, no one has looked at, I mean, I think that generally, the market assumes that, throughout the United States, that people have clean water to drink, and that if there is a problem with the water quality, that it's remedied promptly by the supplying municipal agency.
But are you implying that Hopkinton is hiding this problem from potential buyers?
No, no, but I think that the assumption is probably that, so first of all, we're just not in the business of assessing whether supplying Hopkinton with, with clean water that they request would affect our property values. It just seemed, it was not something that we did. So I'm just speculating, but saying basically that I think that someone who lives there or buys a house there believes that the town will solve the problem fairly short term. Maybe not quickly enough, but that's what they're working on.
Okay. I just, I'm just pointing out what I think is an economic reality. And then with respect to the borrowing, all of the borrowing to pay for these projects, including the work done here in Southborough, will be done through Hopkinton's credit?
Yeah, so they're going to do all the borrowing, Will, so we literally, it's not like we're going to pay for it and they're going to reimburse us. They're paying for all of the infrastructure improvements. The only thing we're paying for, and it's temporary, is the $200,000 we're talking about tonight.
Okay. I guess, I guess, as one other person mentioned, that I would hope that any work done here in Southborough is overseen by Southborough people.
That's the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
Katara Martin, 75 Deerfoot Road. I'm in favor of this. I just have a question. Is, is there, procedurally, I understand what we're being asked to vote on tonight, is there, is this coming back to town meeting for additional approval at some point? Or if this is voted through tonight, does it just, is that the green light, and then it just keeps going?
It probably does not come back to town meeting. Whether it keeps going or not, and it probably keeps going, but whether it keeps going or not, it has to get through a bunch of other gates. We have to finalize an agreement with Hopkinton. The design has to be completed, it has to be checked out, the design has to, the peer review that we're trying to appropriate the money for tonight can't come back and say this will never work. It has to say that it'll work. So, and then the Massachusetts, the Massachusetts approvals have to come in. So there's a bunch of other things to get through, and we also are going to need to approve the tower, the water, the replacement of the water tower. It's going to be a third taller, so there needs to be hearings on that. But those, none of those in particular bring it back to this, to this forum.
So I would just say, my follow-up comment is just that I'm completely in support of this. I would just encourage those who are going to be working out the details to make plentiful opportunities for people to comment, and I've heard some really good points raised tonight, and I think that everyone should have a chance to sort of have input on what the final product ends up being.
Thank you, Katara. We will.
Thank you. Yes?
Claire Reynolds, 104 Main Street. Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion to move the question.
All right. Motion to move the question's been made and seconded. It cuts off all debate, presuming it gets a two-thirds vote. If we pass this motion, then we will move to a vote on the motion on the floor. All in favor of the motion to move the question, please raise your cards. All opposed. Okay, I declare a two-thirds majority. We move right to the vote on the motion on the floor. Requires a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. And all opposed. All right? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Butler. Article 26. Ms. Luttrell.
Mr. Moderator, can I have a point of order?
Where's it coming from?
John Vatalini.
Hi, what's the point of order?
I always thought, I'm a longtime attendee here, but I always thought that if a bylaw, if a, something got voted down, like the tree bylaw last fall, that it couldn't come back for two years.
Yeah, so the tree bylaw was definitely postponed, withdrawn last year. We didn't vote on it, so...
Withdrawn, I thought it was overwhelmingly voted down.
What am I thinking of, then?
Mr. Moderator?
All right. Let me, let me have Town Council speak to that, then.
It's, it's not a zoning bylaw.
Only, there's a two-year bar on zoning.
Ah, okay. All right. Yes, so I don't know if you heard that, John, Jack. The, the tree bylaw is not a zoning bylaw, and so there, that, that two-year sort of moratorium, if you will, applies to zoning bylaw changes and not others.
This is going in our general laws.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. It's a good point of order. Ms. Luttrell, it's all yours.
I move Article 26 as printed in the warrant.
Receive a second?
My second.
All right. Ms. Luttrell.
And I have, there we go. Good evening, I'm Mimi Luttrell. I am the Chair of the Planning Board, and I will be presenting Article 26 on behalf of the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted 5-0 in support of this article. The Planning Board voted 5-0 in support of this article. Trees in the public way, otherwise known as public shade trees, belong to all the residents of Southborough. And there are many reasons to protect them, aesthetics being just one. Trees reduce flooding, erosion, they clean the air, provide cooling, improve mental health, provide habitat, and increase property values. Additionally, public shade tree protection is required by law in Massachusetts. Massachusetts was one of the earliest states to recognize the importance of public shade tree protection. Starting in 1896, an act to provide for the preservation of public shade trees was passed. Three years later, all cities and towns in Massachusetts were required to have a tree Today, Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, still has many of the same provisions as its predecessor, but goes into greater detail than the original act. The Scenic Road Law, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), augments the shade tree law by empowering the Planning Board to work with the tree warden to preserve the aesthetics on scenic roads, resulting in a more open and collaborative process. Southborough has a long history of protecting its scenic beauty and small-town charm. In 1974, in 1975, several roads were designated as scenic roads. In 1978, all non-numbered public roads were designated as scenic roads. In 2019, Southborough further bolstered its commitment to public shade tree protection with the passage by town meeting of the Tree Bylaw, which memorialized the town's commitment to follow the shade tree law, and the town was designated a tree city. Today, we are asking you to take the next step to formalize a process to comply with the shade tree and scenic road laws, which are required by Mass. General Laws, to bring these laws closer to home. Why another public shade tree law? It hasn't been consistently followed in Southborough. This bylaw clarifies the application of the shade tree law and the scenic road law in Southborough by defining terms, setting clear standards and procedures for the preservation, maintenance, and planting of public shade trees. And by doing so, establishing a more responsive and consistent process. When writing the bylaw, we utilized legal opinions of two different town councils, referred to Massachusetts guidelines, and the bylaws adopted by other towns and approved by the What does the Tree Preservation Bylaw do? It clarifies the application of the shade tree law and scenic road laws in Southborough, eliminating, eliminating the confusion that has existed in the interpretation of the law. Having a local bylaw makes it easier to find, easier to follow, and makes compliance easier. What does the Tree Preservation Bylaw not do? It only applies to public shade trees. Those are trees that are in the public right-of-way of public roads, therefore, an asset owned by all of us. It does not impede the removal of hazardous or dead trees, and having a clear, consistent process will likely improve the response to resident calls. This Tree Protection Bylaw follows the shade tree law, and the compliance of which is required by all cities and towns in Massachusetts. Additionally, the passage of the Tree Bylaw by town meeting in 2019 further committed Southborough to comply. We listened to the many opinions shared at the fall town meeting and simplified the bylaw. This version of the bylaw closely follows Mass. General Law and Town Code. The last question is, what is the public right-of-way? Let's use it as an example of standard residential road conforming to current subdivision standards. Typically, the entire layout of the road is 50 feet, 24 feet of which is paved. The remainder of the layout is the right-of-way, which houses curbing, sidewalks, and public shade trees. The right-of-way becomes public when the road is accepted by town meeting. Please help maintain the scenic beauty of Southborough and vote yes on the Tree Protection Bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luttrell. Comment or question on Article 26? Yes? It's on purpose. It's on purpose. You waited to start walking until I asked the question. Over there, please. Thank you.
Stan Michelle, 7 School Street. Certainly, I'm, I'm in support of this. I'm just not clear what it does, what the changes would be, and what it would prevent, and what it would provide, and what the impact might be on town resources or residents.
So this, what's in this bylaw is already required by Mass. General Law. So this brings Mass. General Law closer to home. It's easier to find. It's in our Town Code, so there's no confusion on interpreting the law. We've had issues with huge old trees that have been cut down for unknown reasons. That would stop that. There's a clear process that large trees have to go before a public hearing before they're cut down, as required by Mass. General Law. So it would alleviate the confusion that has existed and set clear standards and a clear process on how to protect our public shade trees, how to maintain them, which we haven't done a very good job at, and how to plant new trees.
I think that answers the question. I guess the, a follow-on question might be, if I'm allowed. I, I know the town resources in terms of tree management are somewhat limited. Is this, you know, is, is this in addition to incorporating this new set of guidelines? Is this a request for additional resources to, to manage the trees around town? Because I know in, in my neighborhood, there are a lot of trees that are close to the road. And the route, the right-of-way, that's a 50-foot right-of-way, only really applies to new subdivisions. Some of the older streets, they're all different in terms of how much there is of a right-of-way there. But there are a lot of trees with broken branches, and, and there are a lot of trees in town that are, that are sort of very close to the road, that are somewhat, somewhat hazardous to people that don't drive on those roads on a regular basis. For most of us, you know, it's Southborough, and we're comfortable with those trees being in the middle of the road, but, you know, people from out of town might not be as knowledgeable. But, so does this change anything, or does it just, I mean, it's still not clear what, what the difference would be. Are you asking for additional people to be hired by the town to better manage trees?
No, we currently have a tree warden designate who does that. And we, just in August, had a consolidated hearing with the Select Board that looked at trees that were deemed by an arborist to be dead on tree reports dating back many, many years. And finally, had a hearing to have all, have those trees removed. So, so hope that we would continue to take down hazardous and dead trees, replant new trees, maintain trees that had limbs that needed to be trimmed. And there's, will be a process to move forward.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, right here.
Will Warren, 6 Sunrise Drive. Did you say that a public shade tree that dies should be replaced?
It should be, yes.
That wasn't done in the case of one of mine. Thank you.
Over here.
Ted Gowdy, 14 Fiddleneck Lane. Excuse me. I guess I'm still a little unclear as to whether or not this changes anything in terms of what trees are covered? And maybe you could clarify what trees are covered or not? And whether or not, whether or not a road is a scenic road, i.e. Article 28, impacts what trees are covered by the bylaw?
So the same trees are covered, whether it's a scenic road or not. The trees that are covered are public shade trees, and those are the trees that are in the public right-of-way. The difference between the scenic road is, and non-scenic road is, public shade trees require a consolidated hearing before the Planning Board, or before the tree warden, which is a Select Board with the Planning Board. So the difference between public shade trees on a scenic road and a non-scenic road is that public shade trees that are asked to be trimmed or removed require a consolidated hearing before the tree warden and the Planning Board.
Okay. Let's come over here.
Parul Sharma, 4 Winter Street. I have a question regarding the town hall that's on, it's a town property where the trees were removed. What did the tree designate do about it? This is on Central Street.
I, I didn't hear that. Did you hear that, Mimi?
Central Street, trees were removed?
Yes.
Oh, you're talking about Fayetteville Hall?
Yes.
That's private property.
Oh, yeah. Those were not in the public right-of-way.
Why not? Because they were less than 25 feet from the street?
So, so the, the right-of-way varies. The example I gave was a, by current subdivision standards, Central Street's an older road than that. And I know that those trees were on private property because when the previous owner came before the Planning Board, their plans showed the property, and those trees were in their, on their property. They weren't in the public right-of-way.
Okay. And then the second thing is, last year, when the question came up, there was a section regarding the roots going into the septic system. The lady who asked that question is no longer here, but...
That, so the, the drip line is what you're referring to, and that has been removed from the bylaw.
And how is this different from the state law?
How is...
The law that you're bringing locally different from the state law?
So there are some, some terms that aren't defined in the state law that we have defined here. There are procedures and processes that work in Southborough that aren't defined in the state law that are in this bylaw.
Thank you.
Hi, Sherri Wittes, 32 Bigelow Road. So when I read this, the purpose really makes me believe that there's a, an environmental edge here, and that this is going to really be for promoting tree growth and maintenance and free tree planting. And then the rest of it really comes off very pessimistic and controlling. It doesn't actually go really into details about the tree management plan or the planting program. I'd love to see more of that angle in this, and some more thought on that, versus just restating what the Mass. General Laws have already stated with defining who's responsible for authority and enforcement. If we really, really care about public shade trees and climate control, then this should be about planting.
All right. Over there.
There is a requirement for planting in the, in the bylaw. There will be regulations that will be developed by the tree warden for the specifics on those things.
Hi, Grant Farrington, 58 Flag Road. As a resident of Flag Road, which has seen a number of very large trees cut down without authority or, or hearings or approvals, I strongly support this bylaw. We have a number of trees on Flag and surrounding streets, one of which was over five feet in diameter, that was cut down with no warning and no hearing. The Select Board and the Planning Board came up with a process to better manage and, and make sure that trees do have, you know, proper hearings before removal. But I, I view this as codifying it rather than just as a, a board policy. This would be in our law so that it can be referred to in the future. So I would urge you all to support this bylaw. Thanks.
All right. And over here.
Timfling, 18 Main Street. How does advisory vote on this article?
Advisory?
Advisory just took a opinion, 1-3 not to support the article.
Okay. And do you have a reason why?
I, I think some of the comments that have been made in terms of, of the overall confusion, there's still some, you know, it, it seems to be, while it's stated that it's following Mass. General Law, there is some extra language here that does not currently exist in those, those laws. So just out of confusion and, and the, the overreach on that, I think we, three of us voted against it. I don't know if anybody else. But that's the basic gist of it.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Moderator, since Mass. General Law already takes care of this, I'd like to make a motion that we indefinitely postpone this article.
You're going to come down and put that in writing?
Okay.
No, he can. All right. Okay. I'm thinking of, never mind. No, no, you don't have to come down. Where are you now? All right. Let's, let's go back to the, all right, so that motion deserves a second. I, but I'm gonna, there are two people at the mic. I'm gonna give them each, you know, 30 seconds if there's something new or different than we've already heard.
Yes. Claire Reynolds, 104 Main Street. I don't know how this fits in now, but I motionally move the question. So do with it what you want.
All right. Well, and that's, okay. So we're not going to move the question because we had this one first. The motion is to indefinitely postpone Article 26. It is, it's a debatable motion. The, the, the result of that is that the article is defeated for tonight. As we learned earlier, when we, when we introduced the article, there's nothing to keep it from coming back because it's not a zoning article. And so if, if this article pass, if this motion passes, then we'll dispose of it for tonight, and we may hear, we may hear it again. So this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of indefinite postponement of Article 26, please raise your cards. All opposed. All in favor? All opposed. Okay. That motion fails. And so now we are back, you know, back, back, no, no one's at the mic, so I think Ms. Reynolds, you're going to get your way either way. It looks like we're ready to vote on Article 26 on the substance of Article 26. Again, requires a majority vote to pass the article itself. How are, all those in favor of passage of Article 26, please raise your cards. And all opposed. Please, all in favor? All opposed. We have to count it. Tellers, please come forward.
can count you. In a second, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask for you to hold up your cards. Hold on.
All those in favor of the motion, in favor of Article 26, raise your cards and keep them up. Keep them up, and we'll let you know as soon as you can put them down. But for now,
Do we, how do we count, how do we count these back to? That's not in row queue, that's not in our section. Do we count them in row two?
Yeah, put them anywhere you want.
Yeah.
Oh, this is just the yes.
This is just the yes.
Okay. One section you're done. Both guys sign this, please. Let's walk you here to the nays. Okay, thank you. You all done?
Yes.
No.
Can we lower them yet?
Go ahead, lower.
Go ahead, go ahead, lower.
Yeah, you go lower. You lower.
Can we lower these yet?
Okay, folks, no reason to delay the excitement. This, this was a tie. Seventy-nine, yay. Seventy-nine, nay. By, by, by rule, as they say in the NFL, by rule, that, that motion is defeated because if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. So a tie goes, a tie goes against the motion. And so Article 26 is defeated. Article 27, Ms. Malinowski.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 27, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $30,000 from Article 3 of the October 13, 2022 special town meeting for the ongoing maintenance and new planting of trees. The tree warden and planning board shall meet regularly to plan the use of funds for the following: inventory of public shade trees by an arborist, creation of a tree planting plan, survey of tree planting areas, planting of new trees, and tree maintenance. The tree warden and town administrator and planning board shall duly approve all expenditures for scenic roads under this article. For non-scenic roads, the tree warden and town administrator will approve expenditures and report them to the planning board.
Does it receive a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Malinowski.
Great, thank you. So this is a new initiative that the planning board and select board have been working towards. And the intent here is to go through a few phases and then establish a new tree planting policy that would get funded every year to replace public shade trees that have been removed. So the first step in this is to complete the inventory of trees in town by an arborist. And then the second step in this would be to complete a study that would allow the town to have a plan on where new public shade trees could be planted in town. So for example, if you have a public shade tree that needs to be removed because it's getting into wires on your property, we wouldn't want to then plant a new tree in that same exact spot and create that problem 20 years from now. So the intent here is to be thoughtful about where new public shade trees can be planted to replace ones that need to be removed. And so again, there's a three-part, three parts to this. You know, eventually, we're hoping to have the funds go directly towards new trees. But to get to that point, we need to have a thoughtful plan, and the goal is to replenish this article every year. I should also note that this will not increase the taxes. This is reallocating funds that we authorized at Fall Town Meeting that was used to clean up a bunch of old trees that needed to be removed, and that is currently in process.
Thank you very much. Comment or question about Article 27? Yes?
Bonnie Faniff, 179 Middle Road. I'm in favor of this, but since we're in a position of hiring a new DPW superintendent and the individual is in that department, can this new superintendent change any of this?
Change the intent of this article?
Yes.
No, because there, there is, so the tree warden is the one that's authorized along with the town administrator, not the DPW superintendent. And for scenic roads, it would be dual with planning board, and for non-scenic roads, it's just the tree warden who's the designee, not the DPW director.
Does the DP, but the tree warden presently works for the DPW superintendent, correct?
The tree warden reports to the select board.
The tree warden is?
The tree warden is, sorry, you're correct. The tree warden is a select board, but the tree warden designee is, reports to the select board.
All right, so there's no potential change to this with the new DPW superintendent and the employee that presently works in that department?
No.
All right, over here.
Tom Gittens, 73 Flag Road. I have a bunch of, I think it's a scenic road, and I have a bunch of big oak trees about this big around. And two of them have been identified through the process and gone through the hearings to be taken down. One was taken down, again, it was about this big around, and I have a great big stump now. And I'm wondering if the second one's gonna end up with a great big stump as well, and if this includes, kind of like grinding that stump up and putting a new one.
To come back.
And my situation's not bad. The next door neighbor that I have had like six big oak trees taken out, again, all about this big around, now with stumps about this high right beside her stone wall, beautiful stone wall, hidden spots. I mean, before, it was kind of adorned with oak trees, but now it's just kind of blocked by these horrible stumps. Does that all get addressed through part of this?
So, great question. The current contract that we're working under is just for the list of trees that was approved in the fall, and unfortunately, I don't, I assume that's what you're referring to. I don't have the...
Yes, ma'am, those were mine.
Okay. I don't have the status as where each road is, and I don't want to speak out of turn and tell you that those stumps should be grinded down. But you can certainly reach out to me, and I can follow up with the tree warden to find out the status of those stumps. But to answer your larger question about tree maintenance, the, the goal of this would be to expand this. Currently, there's a line item in the operating budget of the DPW that deals with maintenance of trees. Now, we had a large backlog, which is why we came to town meeting in the fall to deal with that. But going forward, we're hoping, hopeful that this can be expanded to include maintenance of trees, planting of new trees, so that tree maintenance is all encompassing in one article. But for FY '24, we wanted to start with this and keep status quo of the DPW operating budget for, for the removal of trees.
If I may, then, is, is it appropriate for me to ask to increase this enough to grind my stumps?
Uh, so...
Mr. Moderator, may I make a motion to that effect?
So unfortunately, I don't have any more money to squeeze out of what we have in order to, to not hit the tax rate. We are trying to do this without hitting the tax rate for this year. But I think it's fair for you to ask for me to follow up with you to see if your stumps will be grinded as part of the open contract that we have. Is that fair?
Just to be, that's fine. Just to be clear, if you want to make that amendment, you come down, you put it in writing, et cetera.
I just don't have a funding source.
It's already nine o'clock, so I won't, but please don't forget me.
I won't, thank you.
Over there.
Howard Rose, 2 Bantry Road, a member of advisory, but speaking as a public citizen. I see the money here and the idea. I don't see, and I guess I'm asking, what is the policy and, and what's the procedure to decide where these new trees go, and what's the appeal process if you don't perhaps want one on your property? I see money, I don't see anything behind it of the process.
So this is to develop, in conjunction with coming up with a study to see where it can go, we'll come along the process.
Wouldn't it be appropriate to have the process before you ask for the money?
Well, we need, we need the money to come up with the, where they can go.
Okay, thank you.
Heath Wittis, 32 Bigelow Road. Currently, of the scenic roads, and I probably should have looked into this a little further before the meeting, the scenic roads in town, do they currently fall under the planning board, currently?
So they...
Ones that are actually on the current list?
So the hearings for tree removals are done duly with the planning board and the tree warden.
So what I'm saying is if we voted for these scenic roads that are being proposed here tonight...
I'm not talking about scenic roads. I'm talking about the funding, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm talking about scenic roads. So my, my question is very simple. So there's a list here of roads that need, that want to be added to the scenic roads, correct?
No.
I'm not talking...
Oh, I'm on the wrong article?
You're on, you're on the wrong article, yeah. Scenic roads are next.
That's okay.
I'm starting ignoring what's happening. I apologize.
Anything more on Article 27? Yes?
Adam Faniff, 150 Parkerville Road. I'd like to first start off by saying, appreciate the effort that is going into preserving the trees in this community. They are important. But just as a clarification, inventory of public shade trees, what is the actual definition of size and shape? Is it right now or what it may be in 25 years? Are we actually counting everything within 23 and a half feet of the center line of the road through the entire town? Because that's a lot of trees to inventory.
Well, right now, so Mass General law requires any tree an inch and a half or greater to have a hearing. So it would be any tree an inch and a half or greater that is considered a public... So it would be any tree an inch and a half or greater that is considered a public shade tree.
We are going to fund counting every tree greater than an inch and a half in diameter within 25 feet of the center line in every road in this community.
We have, so we've already started and done, there've been several reports that have been done thus far.
We just need to redo them?
No, we, they're, not all the roads have been done.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, right over here.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. I live on one of those roads that's, you know, basically a paved cart path, and I'm not sure anybody even knows where the right-of-way is, and we're going to count every tree that's an inch and a half on land that we don't really know where the boundaries are. This borders on, well, I, I won't say it.
Comments, questions, anything else? Yes?
Matthew Deo, 1, I'm sorry, 260 Parkerville Road. Several times this evening, I've heard that we have to request to hear what advisory's opinion is because it says "at town meeting." Could we no longer do that? Could you just chime in and tell us every time you say "at town meeting"? Could you just tell us?
Sure.
Thanks. For Mr. Moderator, will you...
Why don't we start now?
All right.
And why, your, you, what your opinion is and why?
It looks like we are 3-1 in support of the article. And I think just personally, having the extra funds available to do tree inventory is good. This article in particular, I did urge the Select Board and the Planning Board to seek a 50-50 matching grant with the DCR. There's an urban forestry grant that hopefully would allow us to do some more thing with this money, but we haven't pursued that yet, but we'll be hopefully using matching funds, but they haven't pursued that.
Any other comment or question? Yes?
Karen Mugridge, 15 Parmenter Road. Do we only have a partial advisory committee here? So the numbers that you're quoting are not from the full board, correct?
There is five current seated members of advisory. One member is ill tonight, so the four members that are here, and it is a quorum.
I understand the quorum, but, okay.
We are actively looking for new members, so please, please apply.
Ted Gowdy, 14 Fiddleneck Lane. So just to be clear, last fall, we approved a bunch of money to use to cut down trees. You didn't use it all, so now you're asking to redirect that money to do a tree study. Is that correct?
Yes, there's a little bit more detail that goes into that. So there's $85,000 in the DPW operating budget, but because it took so long for us to get the tree bid back because we had to go back out to bid again, we're now entering a period of time where we are not going to have enough time to hold another tree hearing and do another bid before the end of this fiscal year. So we, we have used some of the, or can use, based on this vote, some of the DPW operating budget to cover some of the other items, like police details, et cetera, that we authorized from Fall Town Meeting, reallocated to be used out of the budget, so it frees up some of the article in the money, sorry, money in the article from the fall.
Thank you, I think.
Okay.
I move the question.
I can't do that. I can't have you do that with people at the mic.
James Nichols Whirley, 94 Main Street. I move the question.
That we can do. Motion to move, I mean, there's, there's nobody left at the mics at this point, so we could just go to a vote. We don't have to go through moving the question if you all understand the point. So why don't we do that? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 27, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, Article 27 passes. Article 28. Looks like Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the article is printed in the warrant, and this is Article number 28.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, go right ahead.
So I do have a presentation. I recognize the hall. It's also past my bedtime, too, so I'm going to try and be short and sweet. I'm already short, vertically challenged, as they say. So we're going to keep this short. This is about scenic roads. I would like to spend a little time just explaining Mass General Law right now, Chapter 40, Section 15(c). My Chair of Planning Board, Mimi Latrell, already mentioned this law, but it basically protects a scenic road, so those roads designated in town as scenic. It has additional protections for public shade trees and public stone walls. It has nothing to do with it's on your private land. It's not a private stone wall. It's not a private tree. It is public shade tree, public scene, public stone walls. And so the, the purpose for scenic tree designation, sorry, scenic road designation is to add added protections. We're here, 2023. In 1978, the last town meeting that was held, all tree, all streets that were not designated previously were designated scenic. A precedent was sent, set in 1978. I'm asking this town hall and members of my planning board, who voted unanimously this evening, 5 to 0, to support this article, that we'd like to designate all remaining streets that are not numeric or state highways as scenic for the town of Southborough. So this makes it very clear that every road in town would be scenic except for a numbered road. Route 9, Route 30 would not be part of this. It would only be roads that are not numeric or state highways. The guidelines for the Mass General Law do not define what scenic means. So scenic definition is up to us. I'm going to skip through these slides. I'm not going to waste your time. Basically, scenic, I want this hall to think about scenic as a designation for added protection for public shade trees and public stone walls. It's simplistic and makes it very easy for the incoming DPW, the Tree Warden, the Select Board, and the Planning Board to understand how do we manage our trees and protect our public shade trees and public stone walls. We've had issues in the past. We've had very large trees taken down for no reason. We've had stone walls removed. I don't know if you, any, any of you have heard of the St. Mark's Project, but we've had trees and stone walls removed illegally. It's against the law. They're public shade trees, and they're public stone walls. We're asking you to designate the remaining 68 streets that are listed in the warrant as scenic roads. The impact for you is zero on residents. It's a public shade tree. It's a public stone wall. So if any work is to be done, a tree, a hearing has to be had regardless. The only change is in the process. Planning Board and Select Board, or the Select Board designee, the Tree Warden, would need to meet in a joint meeting to make the decisions regarding stone walls and, and public shade trees. So it's zero impact on residents to make these remaining 68 streets scenic. It helps the town manage because the town's had some problems managing this. It's not very difficult to know if all streets are scenic, but it is difficult to know which 68 are not scenic, and to remember that, and to be carrying that through, through your employees. If you make them all scenic, it makes it very clear to impart rules and regulations. The additional language, it has changed from 1978, and I've highlighted and bolded what I've asked to change, which is basically the words that are dark. It says "simplification of town administrative and logistical scene road management." It's really what we're asking is just to make things a little bit more simple in town so there's not so much confusion. So large five-foot oak trees don't get taken down erroneously. Some of these 68 streets were built in 1980s. That actually makes them 30, mid-30s. We're starting to get into some designations of potential historic. So as we get older and our streets and our developments get older, we should think that we're protecting the public shade trees and the public stone walls for all of our streets. So all I'm saying, if I say "vote," you say "yes." Vote?
Yes!
That's it. I'm out.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions about Article 28? Over here first.
Matt Probst, 31 Woodland Road. I'm interested in finding out why Select Board was divided on this and for the majority that voted against it, or I'd like to learn why.
Who can explain Select Board position on this, please?
Does this work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't you stand up, Andrew?
So again, we had a divided vote, but at least the concerns, as I see them, are... So there's a very different type of hearing that's held for the removal of just a public shade tree on a street which is not designated as a scenic road versus one that is on a scenic road. So for a, a tree removal hearing for, on a road which is not a scenic road, the hearing is just done before the Tree Warden, so the, the notice of the hearing is actually physically posted on the tree. There's less regulation about the time of when the hearing takes place. And, you know, in some towns, it's just a hearing that's held like at the Highway Department or the DPW office. And whereas for a hearing to take down a tree that's on a road designated as a scenic road has to go for the Planning Board, Planning Board generally meets once every other week. It's a far more formal, involved process. The second is, you know, the difference is that a stone wall on a, a street which is not designated as a scenic road doesn't have to go, a concern about a removal or an alteration of a stone wall on a street which is not a scenic road doesn't have to go to the Planning Board. So the list of the roads in here, a lot of these are, you know, subdivision roads which were created in 2016 or 1996, and I think the intent of the, the Scenic Roads Act's protection of stone walls is recognizing that they have kind of historical significance and they are part of the fabric of the town, but, you know, a stone wall on a subdivision street that was created in 2016 doesn't really, from my perspective, have that same impact. And also, the Scenic Roads Act was created after the Public Shade Tree Act, so it kind of recognized that there are some streets which are, you know, naturally more scenic, they're more desirous of more kind of protection, and they're part of the fabric of the community. So the whole idea of the just making every street in the entire, virtually every street in the entire town as a scenic road really dilutes the whole idea of having, you know, some roads are scenic and some are, don't, you know, need that much attention in terms of regulatory approvals to take down a tree. And I've always found it significant that in other surrounding communities, like Framingham, Ashland, Hopkinton, Holliston, you'll actually see on the street sign of the road, there's a special little color or designation, "scenic road." To me, that makes it mean more, something more than just having every road in the whole town be scenic.
Mr. Moderator, can I make a comment?
Sorry, I'm going to go to the mics and then I'll come back around. Right here, please.
Robert Reader, 4 Blendedwood Drive. I guess I have a question. I've heard a lot tonight about trees being cut down illegally, and I understand that. My question is, does that mean the Tree Warden approved those? And if he didn't, why going before the same process but for a different group of people do you think the people who cut those trees down illegally would have said, "Oh, now I got to do it"? I, I don't really understand how making these scenic roads address the issue of somebody cutting the tree down without getting permission, whether it's from the Tree Warden or a committee. And I didn't know if someone could answer that question, did the Tree Warden approve these trees that shouldn't have been cut down? Maybe not. If not, that's okay. I just, I, I posed that question to the chamber, saying, "How can this, how is that really going to solve this problem?" And I guess my last, my last comments, the question can't be answered, my last comment is just, I, I echo the last gentleman's comments that if this is to simplify things, going before the Planning Board and an actual board as opposed to going to the Tree Warden is not simplifying anything. So I, I'm not sure why we're doing this to make these scenic roads. I, I don't really see where it's solving the basic issue we're talking about. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Who's?
I think I can address, at le, um, try to answer some of the questions that were posed by the last speaker about...
Point of order?
You have the Planning Board presenting the article. They are the ones who should be responding to the questions at the mic.
I, I don't even know who said that.
Freddie said it.
Okay, Freddie, when you make a point of order, you got to stand up and, and, and make yourself, still name and address, et cetera, but I, I heard you.
Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road, and you heard me.
Yeah.
Well, I was just proposing to answer the questions. If, Mr. Moderator, you would want me to?
Mr. Moderator, I had asked the same thing.
Yeah, and I, and I told Ms. Houlihan I'd come back around, so let's go over to this mic here.
Stan Michelle, 7 School Street. I mean, this article seems, it seems harmless enough. I mean, I, I have a stone wall in front of my house. A few years back, I had a truck back into it and knocked, knocked a big section of it down, and I think I have an Aunt Lame on a scenic road. I called the town, I said, "Hey, someone knocked down my stone wall." They said, "Yeah, it's your stone wall." Couple, couple of years later, I said, "Hey, I want to take down six feet of the stone wall so I can make my driveway a double driveway." And they said, "Oh, well, that's a town stone wall." You could... I, I said, "Well, do you think it is?" And they said, "Well, you could have the land surveyed, you know, and determine, you know, from the center of the street, and you've got to..." I talked to one of the former selectmen, he said, "If you go into some records somewhere, you could find out for that particular street how far from the center of the street it's measured." He said, "Then you have the land surveyed and you're all set. You can figure it out." So I mean, I guess my point is, and maybe, you know, just, you know, as a side note, if you really want to manage these stone walls, you, you have to manage them. You can't just, you know, sit here and say, "Well, that's a, that's a town stone wall," and then tell people, "Well, you know, when it's not convenient, now that's your stone wall." So, for, for what it's worth, I think it's, you know, it's something to consider.
Okay, back over here.
Thank you. Alan Belniak, 5 Boswell Lane. At first, when this started, I thought this was ostensibly to determine which other streets in town are as pretty as other streets are. But it quickly became clear that we're just trying to, at least how, as I understand it, is to lump these streets into with everything else to then give them additional protections. So it's like we're calling streets scenic, because we can call them that, but we're really just trying to use the protection of the word scenic to do other things, which is to give them more protections. To me, that just seems a little bit weird. I think I agree with what Mr. Dennington was saying earlier. I live on a five-house cul-de-sac. There's a stone wall on my street. I think it's pretty. I don't think it's scenic. It's just interesting, so, but I also think, in conclusion, by making every road scenic, it's like if everything is important, then like nothing becomes important. So I agree with, with what Mr. Dennington was saying earlier, that having designations really gives something a designation, so.
Thank you. Over here.
Ted Gowdy, 14 Fiddleneck Lane. Just to repeat on the last speaker, we've defined a, a public shade tree as anything over an inch and a half, and now we're going to make scenic roads where anything over an inch and a half now needs to go before a public hearing with the Planning Board. The incongruity of all just is really bothering me. So I would encourage us to go ahead and rescind the, was it 1978 approval of all scenic roads in town, and that's back up to the real scenic roads are really scenic roads, and everything else is just a road.
All right, thank you. Over here.
Good evening. Julie Connolly, 26 Granual Road. I just wanted to hear a little bit more about sort of the administrative time, time piece on, on the work that the Planning Board, the additional work the Planning Board would have to do by designating an additional 68 roads as scenic and adding to the number of, to their involvement on the number of trees and stone walls that they would have to now have hearings and weigh in on. I, I know that, you know, I've been to many Planning Board meetings. You guys have a very, very full agenda always and a lot of work to do. How much of your work currently is dealing with individual tree issues? You guys have a very, very full agenda always and a lot of work to do. How much of your work currently is dealing with individual tree issues on scenic roads? And how much would that increase? And how would that impact your ability to do other work? I wanted to hear more about that.
Do you wanna go ahead on that one?
Yes, thank you for the question. So right now, we've had very few meetings. I've been on the Planning Board. I've served four years, and we've maybe had one joint meeting that recently happened in August. That's because the process wasn't followed by the designated tree warden. So there weren't any hearings. The August meeting was actually a backlog from 2017 of residents reporting concerns with their trees. So anything that was hazardous or dangerous, the tree warden can immediately address, and that's not an issue. The Select Board, and just to clarify a comment that Mr. Dennington made earlier, the Select Board is the tree warden in this town. They've designated Chris Leroy, who's part of the DPW, but the Select Board would be required to have these meetings. So just for clarity, they still need to have the meetings with the... as the tree warden in town. So it doesn't make or simplify anything or whatever his point was. It's the same process. Planning Board gets involved for scenic roads. We've always been efficient. We care about the trees. We keep the tree city and making sure our public shade trees are protected. And we believe that the scenic roads, by making all of them scenic, it makes them all important. It does make them... It makes it a lot easier. We have over 90 streets that are scenic, and we have 68 that aren't. Who is in our town checking that when they leave their job? No one was before. So we're asking to just make it simple. Simplify it so every road is understood as a scenic road and it's protected the same way. Whether or not it's scenic, by the way of your definition, meaning bucolic and beautiful, this town has never defined scenic this way. This town is defined scenic as protection for public shade trees and public stone walls.
All right, let's come back to the mics, please, over here.
Timfling, 18 Main Street. Scenic should really mean something. 1978 may not have been the best move for the town. I would be supportive if the Planning Board came back and had a smaller list, maybe even reduced some roads that were already on this. So I'd like to make a motion that we indefinitely postpone this article.
Okay, motion, definitely postpone. It's been seconded. It's debatable. It requires a majority vote. But I'm gonna ask the folks at the mics who have not spoken yet, anything new as opposed to in favor or opposed for some of the reasons we've already heard? If you think you've got something that we haven't heard yet, I'll allow it. Either way, pro or con?
I would just like to point out, how many people in this room live on this?
Well, name and address, please.
Joseph Palmer, 158 Parkerville Road. How many people here live on these streets that are looking to be annexed into this program? Because the reality is, you are the people that I would wanna hear from, and I don't feel comfortable voting for all of the other people that live on your streets to annex into this program without them being here to vote on this. We're really deciding the rights of other people in this town that may not be here, and I think that we haven't considered that.
In some ways, sir, you have described town meeting.
(laughter)
And that hot pink warrant has been out for a while. So they could be here. Go ahead, over here, if it's something new, please.
Yes, Kelly Roney, 2 Howes Court. My understanding of the desire for this designation by the Planning Board is that under the previous DPW director, trees were cut down at whim, and this is an attempt to prevent that from going forward again. If I... If you wanna correct me, I'd be happy to hear. Thank you.
All right, something new at the mics. All right, then, yes?
John Butler, 4 Davis Road. In 1978, we had every street designated this. It didn't work in 19... It didn't work through the 1980s, when it was easy supposedly to determine, because every street was designated. I'm not in favor of increased bureaucratization of this right now. Thank you.
All right, over here, anything new?
Yes, John Gibson, 119 Northborough Road. Yeah, so in a newer subdivision, you might actually have a sidewalk and a grass strip, and it's pretty obvious kind of what's public and what's private. But especially in a lot of the older roads, you don't really know where the public way lies. You don't actually know what's gonna be your public... what's a public shade tree and what's just a tree in your front yard, whether or not your stone wall has a foot inside or outside of the public way. So one thing that strikes me about the scenic road laws is this... It's hard to tell what it's gonna apply to different people, and it's this increased bureaucracy that's not obvious and is gonna come and bite people when, you know, they wanna increase their driveway or like the previous gentleman mentioned. Or if there's, you know, a tree with limbs that's falling down on top of their car or whatever. So that's what I'd say.
All right, thank you. You were at the mic when the motion was made, so if you've got something new, I'll allow it. But then we're gonna go to the motion. All right. Where's the gentleman who made the motion to definitely postpone? Did it receive a second? Does it have a second? All right. A motion definitely postponed is a majority vote. It effectively defeats the article for this town meeting only. Any comment or question about that motion? All right, all in favor of that motion to indefinitely postpone Article 28, raise your cards. All opposed? All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Article 28 is indefinitely postponed. Article 29, Mr. Stivers. If seven folks out there think that deserves counting, you have to stand up and say so, not just one. I don't think it was that close, to be honest. That's why I double-checked. Mr. Stivers, go right ahead.
Thank you. Article 29, I move that we vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Receive a second?
Second.
And I believe members of the Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent have some comments about this.
All right, please introduce yourselves and...
Thanks, Sam. Ben Smith, 14 Ledch Hill Road, Vice Chair of Conservation. I'm here with Melissa Danza, Southborough's Conservation Agent. So Article 29 proposes to remove the town's existing stormwater and erosion control bylaw from the zoning bylaw where it was originally inserted. The following article, Article 30, would then insert an amended copy of the Stormwater and Erosion Control bylaw into the general bylaws. Take it out of zoning and put it in the general bylaws. We propose moving it for several reasons. Number one, having the bylaw in the zoning code means that any appeals of conservation decisions are heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the Zoning Board of Appeals doesn't necessarily have the expertise to do this. Their strength is zoning. This is no different than if we were to ask Conservation to hear appeals of ZBA decisions. It's simply not our wheelhouse. Another consequence of the current arrangement is that, as it turns out, the town's zoning enforcement officer, that is our building inspector, can apparently overrule the Conservation Commission and even waive the stormwater management bylaw in its entirety. And in fact, this happened four or five years ago, where the town's previous building inspector entirely waived the stormwater management bylaw for the school street solar farm. Since the adoption of the bylaw in 2008, there's been only one appeal to the ZBA. And the ZBA's action on that was to simply remand it back to the Conservation Commission where ultimately a permit was issued. So under this proposed change, appeals would now be handled just like the appeals of any other action from the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, or even the ZBA itself. These appeals are heard in Superior Court. So that's Article 29, removes stormwater and erosion control from zoning, places it in the general bylaws. It's contingent upon the next article, Article 30, passing. If Article 30 fails, then the stormwater bylaw would remain within zoning.
If this article fails.
Or, yeah, or if this article fails, it remains as-is. That's the summary.
Thank you. Comment or question about Article 29? Yes?
John Bottalini, 4 Wire Circle. I'm torn between this, because I think Article 30 is pretty good, or at least it's an improvement over what we have now. But we're taking the building inspector out, and we're taking the ZBA out, and we're replacing it with court. Isn't that correct?
Jack, I would correct you just on one point in that while we are taking the building inspector out, the person we're then putting in charge is Melissa, our storm... our Conservation Agent, who has a great deal of expertise in stormwater and erosion control issues. But you are correct that the ZBA is taken out of the position to hear appeals.
I guess that my problem... We do away with the... another set of eyes from another board looking at it. I don't know. I just looked at this and said, "Why didn't you go the other route and just say, 'All right, we'll leave it as a zoning bylaw and we'll just put this Article 30 into this one.'"
I can tell you the answer to that was the waiving of the stormwater bylaw for the school street solar farm. To those who have driven past it, you know, it's a large solar farm. And it's... These things typically are in a grass field. In this case, it's all crushed stone. And frankly, we had some very legitimate worries and concerns about stormwater leaving that site. And it was... We were worried, you know, to not have stormwater controls on that. You know, it definitely presented a risk, and it made us aware that we kind of face this risk on every project. And to be clear, we're required to regulate stormwater and erosion control. This is... This comes about from an unfunded mandate as part of the United States Clean Water Act. Under the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Southborough, being a town of 10,000 or more people with a municipal, separate storm sewer system, is required to regulate stormwater and erosion control. And I'm not sure we're in compliance when it gets waived like that.
I don't disagree with you. That was early on, and it was two building inspectors ago. I'm not gonna really argue over it, because I think the changes you made in Article 30 streamlined what we already have. It's just that I thought maybe you could have... Like, most of the Conservation's articles, they would get appealed to DEP or something, and it'd only cost you 100 bucks or so, but...
Yeah. So just a minor correction, we also have the Southborough's local wetlands bylaw.
Right.
That... And if you require... If you're required to file a notice of intent under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, you are also filing a notice of intent under the Southborough Stormwater Bylaw. The notice of intent under the state law gets appealed to DEP, but under the local bylaw gets appealed to Superior Court. And that's the case for every notice of intent that gets filed with us. Yeah. Yeah. I understand your concern, Jack. It's, you know, our weighing of it, it was...
I think you've done a fairly decent job on Article 30, but you've gotta... It just... You're gonna sink one to get the other, so...
All right. All right. Right over here, please.
Sam Stivers, 7 Presidential Drive, former member and chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I support this because frankly, I don't think, at least as I was observing on the ZBA, we did not have the expertise in terms of the stormwater issues. An appeal to us, I think, was less well-served versus appeal to court on these issues. Technical material, engineering material, that again, most ZBA members, in my experience, don't have nearly the technical strength that the Conservation Commission has or a court would have on this. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
Joan Butler, 4 Davis Road. I'm here because there's... It's puzzling to see an amendment to the zoning bylaw, which does not have a reported vote by the Planning Board. Now, it's possible for them to arrive here without such, but there is a procedure required for notification of the Planning Board for an amendment to the zoning bylaw, as I recall. And I'm just... And they're charged with having a hearing, but if they don't have it, there is another... There's an ensuing procedure. I'm just wondering if we followed those steps in this case? And if the Planning Board has, in fact, voted on this?
Their procedure, as it turns out, we were caught off-guard by this ourselves. They... Excuse me? Oh! Rather than stumbling through it myself, why don't we just turn to Mimi Latrell?
The Planning Board did hold hearings on this, and we voted 5-0 in favor and wrote a report.
Thank you. I just didn't see it.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Craig Nicholson, 68B Flag Road. Member of the Zoning Board, not speaking on behalf of the Zoning Board by any stretch of the imagination here. I'm in line with Jack in terms of the appeal process. Recently, the Planning Board, you know, got it approved that nothing that they do can be reviewed by the Zoning Board. Again, I don't think the Zoning Board might not be the place for this, but it's becoming clear that in this town, if you want to have your voice heard and question anything, you need to have the means and the time to hire an attorney and go to court. And that's an equity issue. Not everybody has that. And there should be a mechanism in all of our items that allows somebody to do that locally or through an area that doesn't involve the court as an initial attempt. And if they still wanna go to it, yeah, go to court. That's fine. But if you make it so that unless you have the means to go to court to have your opinion heard, I think that's an equity issue.
All right, thank you. Any other comment or question? All right. Article 29 requires a majority vote. Again...
Two-thirds.
I'm sorry. That's correct. It's right on my screen. Requires a two-thirds vote. Again, the motion is contingent on passage of Article 30. So if you pass this article and Article 30 fails for some reason, nothing changes in terms of the zoning bylaw. So this requires a two-thirds vote to pass. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, declare a two-thirds majority. Article 29 passes for now. Well, it passes, but we'll see what happens with Article 30. Go right ahead, please.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know, Sam, did you... Did you want to make the motion, or I'm... Okay, of course.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 30 as printed in the warrant.
So receive a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Dennington?
I'm just gonna hand it back over to Mr. Smith.
Thank you. This article is a little more involved, more details. Those of you who picked up the green sheet out front, this contains many of those details. I'm gonna give a somewhat quicker overview. The way the stormwater bylaw works right now, a stormwater management permit, the one permit issued under it, is required for any site where a ground disturbance is proposed that's either one acre or more or involves a disturbance of more than 50% of the area of a given lot. These permits generally require the services of a surveyor and a civil engineer and the payment of fairly steep permit fees. It's not uncommon for the cost of, you know, one of these permits on a single-family home for putting on an addition or a septic system or something, in the order of a few thousand dollars. Conservation believes this is unfair to those with smaller lots. There are existing homes in town with lots that are 5,000 square feet. One of these lots would need a permit for a 2,500-square-foot disturbance, whereas on a two- or three-acre lot, you can go up to 0.99 acres and disturb that without a permit at all. So we propose to rectify that, that a full stormwater management permit be required for a land disturbance of one acre or more, hard stop. What we also propose is to enact gen... acre or more, hard stop. What we also propose is to enact general requirements for land disturbances that are more than a half an acre but less than one acre. These requirements will be published on the town website. They'll be distributed when a building permit is issued. And for these sites, between a half an acre and one acre of disturbance, a half acre and less than one acre of disturbance, owners won't have to hire a surveyor, they won't have to hire an engineer, and there will be absolutely no permit fee. This is a rare situation where we can make permitting easier, far more fair, far less expensive, and at the same time achieving greater protection for the environment and for abutting landowners. I would say that's the biggest change. There are some others. One that I think is fairly important that we've seen a couple of times now, we call it the segmentation loophole. For a normal, a regular subdivision permitted through planning board, a permit is required if the total disturbance in the subdivision is greater than an acre. So if you have eight lots, each with a small amount of disturbance, but in aggregate it adds up to an acre, then you need the stormwater permit. However, with a so-called ANR subdivision, the land disturbance is calculated separately for each lot. So the same example, you have an eight-lot ANR development, you can have up to four acres of land disturbance, and it won't require one of these permits because the disturbance on each lot would be less than an acre. And four acres of land disturbance is a lot. The potential for erosion and sedimentation onto other properties, the potential for increased stormwater flows is huge. It's been a loophole. There have been a few projects that have taken place in town where this has become an issue. And the stormwater aspect has not been looked at by conservation. So the proposed bylaw changes this loophole, and if lots are held in common ownership under a common development scheme, then the ground disturbance is treated as an aggregate amount. Next, we clarify in this when a stormwater management permit is needed for roadwork. Right now, it's mostly exempt. The proposed bylaw will require an SMP if the road is widened by three feet or more over a distance of 100 feet or more. And this was, these numbers were put together through consultation with our previous director of public works. And then finally, it just clarifies what land disturbance is with respect to the clearing of trees. This issue has come up on a couple of different projects where, prior to doing any permitting, a developer has gone in and, you know, clear-cut a site. And we're clarifying that if you clear all the trees, that counts as ground disturbance. And before doing that, you should come in and get your stormwater management permit. So those are the big changes. That's the overview. There are far more details on the green sheet. I'd love to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comment or question about Article 30? All right. Seeing none, Article 30 requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Article 31.
So I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Does it receive a second? Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening. Melissa Danza, Conservation Agent. So the amendments, it is a blue sheet of paper in case you got the handouts. These are to allow Southborough to remain in the National Flood Insurance Program so that anyone who is within a floodplain to continue to receive their flood insurance. This is because the FEMA standards, as a community is in part of the National Flood Insurance Program, have increased while the state restrictions haven't kind of kept up. So if you looked at the red line amendments, there does appear to be a lot of language that was added. But the main things that were added were purposes. Now there will be a designation of the floodplain administrator, which would be the conservation agent. So when people have questions about floodplains, if their property is in a floodplain, there will now be a designated person that we can send them to, to direct them with the appropriate information. We kind of just removed some simplistics. We don't need to have the specific map panels that Southborough is in, as long, and the, you know, addresses of state agencies. But otherwise, the amendments to the bylaw do not change any process within town. I know there's a big section that kind of looks like we're adding a whole other separate permit, but in reality, those permits are actually the ones that we already, we already vote on and approve at our Conservation Commission meetings through a notice of intent and order of conditions. So it's just making sure those records are retained and that residents within floodplain can still get their flood insurance. That's it.
Thank you. Comment or question? All right. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Sorry, two-thirds. All those in favor? All opposed. Declare a two-thirds majority. Article 32, Mr. Hegarty. Yeah. All right. So just, Article 32 is brought by Mr. Hegarty, your town clerk. Ms. Berry, Amy Berry, the assistant town clerk, has been sworn to administer this article while Mr. Hegarty moves it and speaks to it.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Hegarty, 14 Fiddleneck Drive. I move Article 32, and because it's very brief, I'm going to read it. To see if the town will vote to adopt is Article 5, Chapter 27 through 28 of the Town Code the following. Correction of non-substantive scrivener and formatting errors. The town clerk is authorized to correct typographical, grammatical, numbering, and punctuation errors as necessary in the Town Code, and the town clerk is authorized to make formatting changes as needed for purpose of clarity, format, form inconsistency. These changes shall not in any way alter the language, intent of the bylaw, or to do or act anything in relation thereto.
Does it receive a second? All right. Mr. Hegarty.
Mr. Moderator, this is the Town Code. A zillion people have had input into it, and there are mistakes in it. Very simple little mistakes. And this is, let me give you a classic example of it. At a recent town meeting, last year's town meeting, we approved Section 942, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. And right now, I have to put in the Town Code everything exactly as written, typos, mistakes, you name it. And I'm just going to read the first paragraph. As more fully described in the remainder of this Article 11, this article establishes a committee that will be responsible for creating and maintaining. All right. Well, clearly, that's not what they intended to put in the code. That was a mistake when they created the article. That's something that should have been read. It should have just said, this is to create the capital improvement plan. That's a classic example we're looking to create. You have bylaws that's spelled four different ways, simple things like that. That's all this intended to do, so they can fix little things like this and not spend time coming to you at town meeting.
All right. Thank you. Comment or question about Article 32? Yes?
Grant Farrington, 58 Flag Road. I believe I largely support this article. I just have a quick question about if there will be a record kept of any changes, especially I saw that it gives the clerk the ability to change numbering. So I just think about, you know, if you're referencing a certain section in the Town Code, and then the town clerk changes the numbering, I just want to make sure there's a record kept of any changes that are made by the clerk, so that the people can see what did change. Thank you.
Mr. Hegarty.
Sure. Every single change, the code is footnoted. For example, look at the bottom of this one right here. Like, for example, at the recent town meeting, when we changed the term of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, every single instance of that that appeared in the Town Code, there's a footnote on every page to reflect that.
Yes?
Craig Nicholson, 68B Flag Road. Is there anybody that proofreads what the clerk is going to do before it's done? Because a misplaced comma can mean a lot of different things, especially in a code. So can it just, if there is a change, have it be proofed by someone before it gets written in and has to be changed again later?
You familiar with a book called Eats, Shoots, and Leaves?
Yes.
You're right about punctuation. Mr. Hegarty, do you want to address that one?
No, but if you want to make a motion to amend it, to have it reviewed by town council, that works for me.
I'd be happy to amend it.
Sure.
I'd like to amend it so that any changes the clerk proposes is reviewed by town council prior to being finished. And I'll come up and...
All right. Let's come up and put that one in writing. Does that amendment to have Mr. Hegarty's typographical corrections reviewed by town council receive a second?
Second.
Any comment or question on the proposed amendment? All right. Then let's just, let's just hold tight. Let me take this time while we're waiting on the amendment. There's just a few articles left, and several of them, my understanding is at least four, maybe five, will not be coming forward tonight because the proponents are not intending to move them. So we have much less to go than you think.
I would have a question on the town council. Is that allowed at this point? Having the town council?
If you have a comment or question about the amendment, go right ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I think the select board or the town meeting should give some consideration to, because, you know, there is a lot of difference, and there's a lot of impact of changing a comma, changing a period, or just general interpretation of what's written and not written. So, I mean, whoever reviews that and revises that has a lot of, has a lot of leeway and a lot of influence. So, I mean, someone should give some thought to who actually does that, for what it's worth.
All right. Thank you. Yes?
Chelsea Malinowski, 7 Lorenzo Drive, Select Board, Board of Health, but speaking as an individual. Town council spends a lot of time on substantial work for the town, and I'm not sure that this is the best use of our tax dollars for the stipend that we pay on a monthly basis that was challenged earlier tonight. So I would suggest that we defeat the amendment, and if there's somebody else that's willing to step forward to review this, then we're accepting volunteers. But I think in the meantime, this is not a good use of taxpayer dollars.
All right. Any other comment or question? Amy, are you all set? Okay. All right. Seeing none, then. The motion on the floor is the amendment. Do we have that, Jay? Can we? I mean, we could type it and put it on the screen if you want. I think it's pretty straightforward. The amendment is to add, you know, a proofread step after the clerk makes the typo changes. So with your permission, I'll go ahead to a vote on the amendment without putting it on the screen. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment to have town council proofread scrivener's errors, please raise your cards. All opposed. All right. The amendment fails. We're back to Mr. Hegarty's original motion. Requires a two-thirds vote because it amends our Town Code. Any more comment or question on the original motion by Mr. Hegarty? Yes?
Ted Gowdy, 14 Fiddleneck Lane. I appreciate the idea of somebody reviewing it. I like the idea of not town council. So is it appropriate that Board of Selectmen, who's the, I'm looking for suggestions for those in government, as to who the secondary party is going to be? Don't all stand up at once.
There is an assistant town clerk that could do this. There is an assistant town administrator that could do this. That's two that I would throw out, and not the select...
I mean, I've resisted this as long as possible. Where's Mr. Nichols? I mean, how much free time do you have? All right. Yes, comment?
I move that the assistant town administrator, or the town administrator, approve the scrivener's errors or other edits by Mr. Hegarty.
You're going to have to come down and put that in writing.
Excuse me. Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Yes.
There's not a chance in the world that an appointee of the Board of Selectmen will approve the work of an elected official. That's out of order. That doesn't fly.
Well, I'll let town council speak to that.
I withdraw my motion.
Town council informs me that the amendment is legal. Yes?
John Mello, 10 Bertrand Drive.
But hold on a second. Are we going to make that amendment or not?
He withdrew it.
He withdrew it? Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Yes, comment?
Me?
Yes.
Roger Challen, 29 Oak Hill Road. I think we might be being silly here. The motion itself says that the changes shall not in any way alter the language, intent of the bylaw. So if we're saying, well, now we should check to make sure that something didn't conform to the motion itself, I think the town clerk is quite capable of making these minor changes, you know, without review.
Thank you. Yes?
Will Warren, 6 Sunrise Drive. Question would be, well, first of all, Jim's probably not going to be here forever. And if in the future, there's a situation where a change is made, and then people say, you know, then there becomes a division of opinion whether or not that changes the intent, how would that be resolved?
I mean, how do we decide what any town statute means?
No, but what I'm saying is that changes will be made by, let's say, the clerk of the town, whoever that is at the time. And then, you know, essentially, those are becoming the bylaw, right? But if there's a disagreement as to whether or not, does that really change it, or did that not change it, how would that be resolved? Would that have to go to a town meeting to get resolved?
Yeah.
And in the interim, would the changes take effect?
I mean, I, you know, I'm, for what it's worth, I think we are down a rabbit hole. And I'm not disagreeing with your point, right? But if we appoint someone a proofreader, of Mr. Hegarty, who proofreads the proofreader? Right? I mean, we could, I think the answer, if we're really concerned about this, I think the answer is to defeat this article, frankly.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Hegarty.
Ben Shanser, 12 Fiddleneck Lane. I would like to move to amend it to also include that the town clerk can go and change all of the language to gender-neutral language as opposed to words such as man in our Town Code.
Yeah. So that amendment is not in order. It's much, much, much beyond the scope of the article in the warrant. It's not, it's not, it's not out of order for a future warrant, but motions and amendments have to be within the scope of what's in the warrant, which is why it's printed ahead of time. I'm not, if there's some, if you're not sure what I'm getting at, you know, please say so. Okay. Yes?
So I'm Steve Hinternetter, 79 Woodland Road. Can I move this to a vote here? But I've called a question, move, move. Can we move to vote on this thing so we stop wasting time? Because there's no amendments that are written, right?
Yeah. Hold on. Do we, we have an amendment, right?
No.
Okay. So, all right.
Hello. I've been here for a while. Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we do that, I am going to take a comment over here.
So John Mello, 10 Bertrand Drive. I understand the simplicity of changing corrections, punctuations, and so forth, but we need some type of oversight and checking. A comma will get sued in the future. So if we're going to do this, I would amend that the select board needs to review and approve... the select board needs to review and approve the changes. That's my amendment, unless we want to postpone this article.
Well, if you want to make the amendment, let's come down and put it in writing. Does the motion to, does that motion to amend to have the select board oversee the clerk on this receive a second? All right, let's put it in writing.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
John Butler, 4 Davis Road. You said that this required a two-thirds vote, but ordinarily, bylaw changes require a majority unless this is intended to apply to the zoning bylaw. I'm puzzled as to why it requires a two-thirds, but maybe I'm in error.
Well, you're, you're in error because your first presumption is correct, which is...
It does require, it is because it would include the zoning?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Do we have any comment or question on the amendment that's being finalized to have the board, the select board review the clerk's efforts in this regard? Comment or question on that amendment? All right, hold tight. Amy, you have it, you're all set? Okay. Same thing, folks, unless, unless you want it on the screen. The amendment inserts the select board as an oversight as to the clerk's correction of typos and Scrivener's errors, et cetera. So you have a comment or question about that, sir?
Yeah, I, what I wrote was...
Name, name and address, please.
John Mello, 10 Bertrand Drive. What I wrote was, I want the original writer or the committee who proposed the law and the select board to both be in the review process.
Is that...
And approval.
Yeah, well, I... Sir, your, your original motion that you gave at the microphone does not include the original writer. So you're either going to withdraw the current motion and make that new motion, or we're going to vote on what you originally said.
What I originally said is fine.
Well, I think we saved the most time by just voting on the, the motion that you gave at the mic, not the one you wrote down here.
Correct.
So come forward and just strike out the, the original writer, writer words. I don't, not three times. All right, so, yes, comment or question?
John Bottolini, 4 Wyatt Circle. How do we handle this now? Did, I, did I miss that or...
Actually, I don't, I don't think you did. Jim, do you want to speak to that?
Everything is put into the code, typos, everything as is, and I'd have to bring an amendment to every town meeting anytime we find something to fix. So what I was hoping to do was to save your time at town meeting, and I'm sorry that I'm wasting your time tonight on something like this. I just, I, I filed this in the heading of "No Good Deed Goes Unpunished." I'm sorry.
All right, all set, Amy? All right, so the motion is to, is to have the select board double-check the typographical and Scrivener corrections that the clerk would make under his original motion. So that motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor of, I'm sorry, that amendment requires a majority vote. All those in favor of that amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed. Okay, the amendment fails. We are back to now, after two failures, we're back to the original motion. You have a comment or question about the original motion?
No, I already moved it to, to a vote here, right?
I'm sorry?
So I, I want to vote on this.
Are you, you're moving the question?
I, I already did, and then you trumped it with the amendment.
Well, he was at the mic, so, okay, you're renewing your motion to move the question, and I'm fine with that.
All right, I'll step back. I'll wait, go ahead, let's vote.
Yeah, we're there. So we, we don't need to, well, it depends what happened. Come on, Kelly.
Kelly Roney, 2 Halls Court. I have a question.
About?
About this bylaw. Town bylaws have to be reviewed by the Attorney General of the state of Massachusetts in the normal case. Would Scrivener's errors corrected also be subject to that review?
Okay, the town council is telling me, no. The answer is no. That, that is not part of the AG's review, or wouldn't be a subsequent AG review. All right, we have a motion to move the question on the floor. Cuts off all debate, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed. All right, I declare a two-thirds majority on the, on the motion to move the question. Now we move to the actual motion, which is also a two-thirds vote, given that it could affect the zoning bylaw. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed. I declare a two-thirds majority, so Article 32 passes.
Thank you, and I hope to save time for the future.
Article 33, Mr. Nichols Worley.
Thank you. I move Article 33 as printed in the warrant.
I need your name and, and address, please.
James Nichols Worley, 94 Main Street. And I move Article 33 as printed in the warrant.
Receive a second? All right, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. So first citizen's petition of the night. I'm surprised this wasn't on the consent agenda since it's so popular. No. This warrant article would expand the voting age in town elections from 18 years old to 17 years old. It would require us to pass it tonight, and then it would be sent off to the state legislature, where it would obviously need to be approved in the House, the Senate, and by the governor. So I just want to talk about the inspiration for this, because it is admittedly a pretty big change. I mean, ever since 1970's 27th Amendment, when we lowered the voting age to 18, there have been very few changes to what the qualifications are to vote. So a bit about my reasoning. I served on the St. March Street Park Working Group, I believe we're still serving on that committee, when I was 17. I was lucky enough, moderator kindly let me attend two town meetings as a guest when I was 17. At 17, I, I testified before the state legislature. I mean, I've, I've been involved in all sorts of political activity, even under FEC guidelines. I could make a donation to a political candidate, but I could not vote for select board, planning board, or any of other elected positions in town. This warrant article would only apply to our municipal offices. And I think this is very important, and I've highlighted that voting younger, think about some of the things you started at 17, and think about those habits that have lasted with you throughout your life. It creates a lifelong habit of civic participation, but I think it's so much more than that. It's not just, I don't, I think that nothing is more important than our town government. This isn't training wheels for future civic participation. This is, how can we get young, young adults seriously involved in our community? If you move away for work, or college, or school before you turn 18, you just, you miss the town elections. You don't get a voice. And I know what this is like. I turned 18 two weeks after Election Day in 2022. I didn't feel any different on my birthday. I don't think I got any wiser on November 27th than I was on November 26th. I think that this could be a great thing for our town. Think about the people who grew up here, moved away, and then moved back. You heard from some very talented young gentlemen earlier tonight who are seniors at Algonquin. Moderator had to ask if they were registered voters. Well, if you're a senior in high school, if you've gone through 12, 15 years of education, of civic education, if you're one of the many young people who work for the town of Southborough, who, or who work at one of the many businesses in the area, like at Moro's or in Westborough at Yulman's, if, if you're any of these things, one of those gentlemen earlier was a senior Algonquin, he rightly pointed out, a lot of young people will not be here to see the immediate effects of the good decisions they make. They're planting seeds of trees that future generations will get to sit in the shade of. I think that we can expand the voting age, that we can do a great thing for the town. This language is based off of language that the city of Boston has passed, that's working its way through the Worcester City Committee. I, I truly hope you can support it tonight. I think it would be a great thing for the town of Southborough. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Comment or question on Article 33? Go here first, then come back over here.
Heath Wittis, 32 Big Little Road. I heard seeds, trees. Are we talking about scenic roads again? Or am I... No, I'm just kidding. Sorry. You can be 17 years old and join the military, so you should be able to vote.
All right, thank you. Right over here.
John Thorburn, 1114 Madison Place. An 85-year-old voter. I have been deeply struck by the four or five young people here that are seeking to have this, this enacted for the 17-year-olds. They are the future of our community and our country. And like he said, if they're old enough to go die for us, they're old enough to vote for us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Over here.
Tracy Navaroli, 1 Bridge Street, Board of Registarians. I'm speaking as an individual. I have a daughter who is 17 years old. She is not allowed to be in this room without special permission. She's missing out on the experience, and I am, I'm in favor of this article. I think it would be great for our youth to be able to participate.
Thank you. Over here.
Kelly Roney, 2 Halls Court. Thinking back to my first vote when I was 18 in 1976, why was I so interested in that vote? It's because I talked with it, with my parents about politics around the supper table, and I think it's a great opportunity to model that behavior and allow our younger people, our 17-year-olds, to get started. You know, I see James as a great example of that, for example. Thank you.
All right. Yes, over here.
Matt Probst, 31 Woodland Road. I'd love to hear from advisory and why majority advisory voted against it.
Mr. Faff. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Tim Martel, 7 Bantry Road.
Yeah.
Also a member of advisory. One of the unintended consequences of this bylaw change is that not only will they be able to vote based upon how the bylaws are written, they will also be able to run for office, because running for office is not limited by age. If you are a registered voter, you can run for the select board or any other elected board. That's one of the reasons that drove our decision for why we felt that this was not entirely appropriate, as much as we would like to encourage civic participation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Over here.
Hi, Amy Rosenberg, 8 Kidder Lane. Actually, Mr. Probst asked the question I was going to ask, which was why advisory and one person on the select board oppose this. I would say, as the mom and stepmom of five young women aged 17 through 23, who are all really politically active, that we want to be encouraging people to get involved. I mean, if you look around here, this is what, maybe like 1 and 1/2% of the town population is actually here showing up, so I think we need all the help that we can get.
All right, thank you. Over here.
Noah LaBelle, 27 Main Street. Just to respond to the, the point about running for, running for office and serving in an elected position, if James is not more qualified than anyone in this room to serve in elected office, I would be surprised. If any of the gentlemen and anybody else in high school who is 18 is not more than qualified to be serving in a position of public trust, I don't know who else is. So I do, I think if anything else, this should be a proponent of the proposed measure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Back over here.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. I, I'm in favor of this motion, even though I'm somewhat aged. And one thing I want to point out is, we have a lot of trouble filling vacant positions on town committees, and if we open up, expand the pool of registered voters, we expand the pool of potential public servants as well.
All right, thank you.
Ben Shanser, 12 Fiddleneck Lane. Mr. Martel, I don't feel that your characterization of it as a consequence is a fair characterization. I think that it's a benefit of it, like Noah was saying, and if the town feels that a 17-year-old who can vote is not qualified to run, the town's vote will reflect that. And it's not necessarily the place, if, if the option exists and someone runs, and then the town votes against, then the town votes against.
All right. Over here, no? Okay, back over here.
Yeah, I just, you know, I...
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Stan Michelle, 7 School Street. I am, I think very much in favor of 17-year-olds voting. I mean, I think, I want to draw a distinction between voting for a candidate and voting sort of as the, as you explained it, I think, Moderator Serena last week, as the town meeting being the, the people that approve the budget and the spending of the town. And so I think, you know, that in considering this proposal, I think you need to look at the potential differences between voting for someone that can choose an elected official versus voting to spend $58 million and the impact on the tax rate and the impact on the family budget and that type of thing, which, you know, I think, you know, that's something that, you've probably got a group of people that are more aware and more in touch with that type of thing. You know, it'd be interesting to vote on an Algonquin, you know, initiative to spend a few million dollars on something and have, say, 100 or 200 high school students show up and vote in favor of it. I think that would, you know, probably be a significant impact on the budget that was an unintended consequence. So, I mean, I think it's something that people should consider.
All right, thank you. Next person at the mic is over here. So I've been informed prior to coming back from the break that this individual might want to speak and address the hall. It's Cassie Mello, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and she is not a registered voter. She's currently 17, and so she is not allowed to participate unless we approve that. And so before we go too far down the road here, the question is, by show of hands, if we want to hear what Cassie Mello has to say. All right, ma'am, go right ahead.
Thank you so much. I just want to talk about the civic expectations that Algonquin has for students. They have a post around the school that encourages students to get out and exercise their right to vote, and while it's great that many do, a lot of people definitely at Algonquin do not have that political ability. Also, on the topic of committees, earlier this year, I talked to Bonnie Faniff because I was concerned with the lack of accessibility at Algonquin for ADA compliance, and I wished to help as a voice, serving on the SPAC committee. And I was told that since I'm not a registered voter, that was not an option for me. That's very different than running for select board, but I just want to point out that there are many town committees that you do have to be a registered voter to join, and I think it's an important experience to be able to, especially with situations like Algonquin and ADA compliance, where they have a very strong relation to what SPAC discusses. So, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Over here.
Phil LaBelle, 27 Main Street. In regards to...
In regards to allowing seventeen-year-olds to vote just for elected officials and not to participate in town meeting, it seems like we would want to create a tiered system there, and calling back maybe a poll tax. Maybe we should make it that anyone who rents or is living here in someone else's home wouldn't be able to vote either, using that sort of logic. If we're going to allow seventeen-year-olds to participate in their civic duty, and by God, they want to get five hundred students in here to vote for something, let them do it, for the love of God. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comment or question? Okay, seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed, the motion carries. Article thirty-four, hold on, Article thirty-four, thirty, I'm sorry, Article, Articles thirty-four, forty-two, and forty-three are citizens' petitions proposed by Mr. Perry, David Perry, who, prior to leaving for the evening, informed the select board and the clerk that he was not going to stay and bring those forward. So for lack of a motion to even put them on the floor, we will just move on to Article And who's got Article thirty-five? Is Peter Lapin here? All right. Well, that disposes of thirty-five and thirty-six. There's at least two more of those coming, so we are really down towards the end here.
It's Article thirty-seven. Thank you for your patience this evening in waiting. The article reads, to see if the town of
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Bonnie Faniff, one-seventy-nine Middle Road.
Thank you.
Article thirty-seven, to see if the town of Southborough will vote to request that the select board exercise the town's option to withdraw without penalty from the intermunicipal agreement, a draft of which is entitled, Agreement for a Metta West Regional Emergency Communication Center District. Per the terms of Section Four, Paragraph A of that agreement, any town shall have the right to withdraw from their agreement by giving written notice in accordance with Section twenty-three no later than June twenty, June first, twenty-twenty-three. And upon such termination, the terminating town shall know no further responsibility hereunder and to request the board not enter any IMA for similar purpose without first presenting the principal term to town meeting for its recommendation therupon or do anything or do or act anything in relation thereto.
So receive a second. All right. Ms. Faniff.
All right. To save the time in the hall, first of all, I want to thank the department heads who took the time to speak with me, the Board of Selectmen who knew that I was doing this, for the cooperation of the members of the Westboro community, the town manager, the assessors' office in conservation, and the fire chief in Grafton. I am going to turn this over to an individual who's worked just as hard as I have. He's put a slide presentation together, because I will lose my voice, and his is much stronger. Thank you.
With the permission of the moderator. Thank you, Mrs. Faniff. So there's a there's a presentation which we can get to, please. Thank you. I'm I'm should explain that both Mrs. Faniff and myself brought concerns about the regional dispatch IMA to the Board of Selectmen, the Board, Select Board, before the vote on this. And Mrs. Faniff had identified what I thought was an important point, and when I spoke with her about it, she wanted to bring this forward to to town meeting for consideration. And I supported her in that, and we collaborated in this in this work. It's always somewhat reluctant to rise before you in this particular forum, form and capacity, but I think that there are important issues that you should be aware of and that Mrs. Faniff and I wanted to bring to your attention. And we we think that it's because it's an unusually serious situation that we aren't and course of action that were embarked upon here, which has some serious errors in it. Let's see here, did I go too? Okay. So the this, there are two warrants that concern regional dispatch before you tonight. This first one is only about this particular intermunicipal agreement that would enter us into a new region. And we think that this particular one has problems, which we want to bring to your attention. The second, the next warrant article would, so the intent of this one is that we request that the select board not proceed with this particular IMA in the current condition. The next one, the next article, assuming it comes forward, would request that they go forward with essentially no regional dispatch arrangements whatsoever. So that's the difference. If you if you think that you agree with Mrs. Faniff and I that this one is seriously flawed, and we shouldn't do this particular one, you may vote for this while you still think that perhaps a regional dispatch might be something that should be in your in our future, while the next, the next one would basically say that we should never should never do that. So we're not taking a position on that on that topic here. This decision is a long-term decision. Once you get into this, you can't get out, the state nine-one-one board will not allow you to go back to having an individual town dispatch service. So it has very serious consequences, and there's no good way to get out. You can go to a different region, but it that may be very expensive, because by that point, you may be on the hook for debt that's been incurred by the region that you entered in the first place. And for those reasons, it's extremely important that the plan and the intermunicipal agreement for that be correct, or we're going to live with the consequences of that for decades. And I don't think, and we don't think, Mrs. Faniff and I don't believe, that this particular intermunicipal agreement would pass those tests. And I would add that the advisory committee, after we reviewed this, has voted unanimously to support this particular warrant. And in the original case, it passed by by a divided vote at the select board, four to one, with Mrs. Cook originally not voting for the IMA. So let's just proceed. We think that the defects in this are that it is an unwise use of a superfund site in Westboro, that it is an unprecedented removal of the taxation power from the authority of this body, this town meeting, and that it poses risks. If you believe that a dispatch center is important to do soon, then this one is will be comparatively slow and opposes risks that you wouldn't engage, you wouldn't bite into if you joined a different region that's running successfully already. So for all those reasons, which I'm going to go into a little bit more, we think that this one is ill-conceived, and we should leave it. So the next, this is the topic that fortunately Mrs. Faniff researched, and then we worked on some more. The intermunicipal agreement specifies that the location of the region, of the new regional dispatch facility to be established must be on at a particular address in Westboro that is a former Creosote contaminated superfund site. The the site is permanently prohibited by the Environmental Protection Agency for for use as a residential, in any residential use. It is abundantly clear that it has areas you cannot go into. Westboro has been looking for, trying to figure out what to do with the particular site, which it owns now, for the last five years. Our main point would be, this is a problem, and it's not Southborough's problem to solve. It's not a good place to put high-stress, twenty-four-seven union jobs that, and we're going to say a few more words of this, that the neither the science of this nor the legal indemnification, which might be pursued, can turn this into a good idea for our town. We have a huge amount of empty office space and appropriate facilities potentially all along Route Nine through these towns. So why in the world would we choose to put twenty-four-seven employees on a former superfund site where they may naturally worry about the health effects of this? So the next, this point, slide makes the point that science doesn't govern our fears and anxieties about our health. We see that constantly in our society, and we have to make realistic choices about the management problems that might accrue by putting employees on a site where they, if they develop some health issue that seems anomalous to them, that they're going to worry that the cause of their early cancer, asthma, lung disease, that it may be tied to their place of employment. And it, the science may tell us that, oh, that's not the case. But no amount of scientific assurance is going to comfort a person who has developed some some disease and which they think it may be caused by the environment of their work. So why should Southborough buy into the potential management risks associated with that? We would just point out that, look at our recent history through this pandemic, there was nearly universal scientific community conclusion that vaccines were safe and effective. But but at least thirty-five or forty percent of the population did not believe that, and perhaps with with reason. We just know that science doesn't carry the weight of convincing every person, even if it convinces me, even if it convinces you, it may not, it doesn't convince a hundred percent or anywhere near that with regard to the elimination of their anxiety about their health in the real world. And we have, we, Southborough, have no reason to project ourselves into an imaginary world in which science will make this problem go away. Instead, we're, what we're doing here is buying into a potential management problem down the road as people, as people be, who employees there, develop concerns about their health, whether those are scientifically justified or not. Now, there's a great deal of, a great deal of talk around this IMA about indemnification. Indemnification would mean that Westboro, perhaps, would say to us in one form or another that if there are any legal costs or lawsuits that emerge from concern about people's health on this site, that they would cover the cost of them, or it may perhaps be that federal law protects against such lawsuits. The question that Mrs. Faniff and I ask is, why should we be going into a site where at the, at this stage, we're already worried about health indemnification, when there are so many places that it's unnecessary to have these concerns? And the further issue is that if five years down the road, or six, seven years down the road, we have a group of union employees who are worried that that Susie's disease or Fred's disease was caused by the Creosote residuals on this site, and they have a management problem, so indemnification is going to get us out of that. And we shouldn't, we should not be at this stage stepping into a site in which we're already having a conversation about indemnification. I assure you, if this was a normal office property, the topic of indemnification would not be a public matter of concern, and it shouldn't be for any sensible choice of a location to put a regional dispatch facility. Okay. The next problem. So Mrs. Faniff entirely was responsible for uncovering the issues associated with the superfund site, and I made the mistake of reading the intermunicipal agreement a few months ago. And the only reason I did it was I was going to be working on intermunicipal agreement for the water system that you heard about before. And I read this, and I was frankly shocked. The agreement strips our town meeting of the control of budget, taxation, and debt. We've been doing this for three hundred years. You saw earlier today, we had an extensive, very productive debate about seven million dollars to approve the debt for the Algonquin Regional School System for the athletic fields. If we had voted no, it would have gone back to the regional committee, and which is an elected board, and then come back potentially to town meetings in some form. But that vote was important. That's why the superintendent was here. That's why the elected board brought that elected regional board, brought that to before this town meeting. In this case, it's incredible, but there's a three-person group. One, Southborough has one vote, the other two are the town managers of Westboro and Grafton, and they can, they can put forward any budget that they want. If those two vote for it, you have no choice. If you vote no, it goes on your tax rate anyway. Now, we've been operating regions for seventy years here, very nearly seventy years, with complete democratic control of budgets and taxation, without any problem. There's no justification whatsoever in history for needing this kind of power given to the town managers of Grafton and Westboro. I would, I note on here, and it's not really facetious, the United States Joint Chiefs of Staff don't have this power. Why do Grafton and Westboro town managers need this power? I can't understand it. Now, you would think that if you were going to go down a path as 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 large a departure from all of our history of self-government in this community, in this region, that you would at least put caps on it. There are no caps. There are no caps on the budget or taxation that they can, that they can force upon us without this vote of this town body having any meaning whatsoever. All right. So, you know, it's practically as sacrosanct as free speech that employees don't set taxation, that only citizens do that. And in the few places where we historically have seen that error made, that effectively the equivalent of taxation can be put forward without a vote of the electorate, you have enormous waste. The Mass Turnpike Authority is the local preeminent example, where they have eight-point-six employees per mile, and they have control over their own revenues, whereas Mass DOT, DOT, which has, which has half an employee per mile of highway that they maintain. If we leave it this way, in twenty years, we will wonder why the regional dispatch is as inefficient and wasteful as it is, and we will probably also find out that the staffing is the nephew of the former town manager of Westboro and the and the uncle of someone else. That's what happens when you ignore the lessons of history with regard to citizen control of of budgets and finance. Now, the error originates in state law. There is a state law which suggests that this form of of funding should be approved, but we don't have to adopt that state law. That's entirely our own choice. That's the choice that we should not be making, that is in the IMA. If we ever do want regional dispatch, we have some choices. We can write an IMA that has regional, reasonable budgetary controls. The Berkshires have a regional dispatch that, for example, limits debt. Air and Shirley have a region that they've created without the adoption of that particular law that has that problem. Or we can use some other, some other district creation laws that, for example, are widely used for sewer and water districts. Or we don't have regional dispatch. But the notion that we should depart from all our governmental practices for this one activity is ill-advised, and Mrs. Faniff and I both believe, and we're afraid that we have to bring that to your attention. Okay. So lastly, if somehow you think it's extremely important that we quickly get to regional dispatch, which, a view which I don't share, I do, I'm sort of on the fence about regional dispatch, but I have a lot of questions about it. But if you're of the group view that this should, this needs to happen, so I'll tell you a few things about it. There's a lot of startup risk. Sometimes these things just don't work well and take a while to get going properly. If you want to, you can join some that are working, then you know what it's going to cost, and you have to negotiate with them, but they want to bring on new members. I'll also tell you that, looking at the economics a little bit, it looks to me like you need six to eight member towns to make these things break even long-term, but that's, that's beyond the scope of this. Right now, I would say however, that you could negotiate to join some that are working, where you know the costs, and they're getting to the kind of numbers where there is potentially good economic break even. So, if you want to think that we suddenly, after 50 years of running our own dispatch, have a sudden emergency that we need regional dispatch, well, you can get into one without taking on these risks that we've talked about, without going, for example, to a Superfund site, and you can, and you can get in quickly and it'll, and it will work. And then the last thing is, we, we think that, as part of this, that this is such a big decision and so long-term that it's better to have more eyes and ears looking at it, thinking about it, talking about it, and that it should come back here. And so that's, that's the last part of this, of this particular warrant. And I thank you for your attention, and again, sorry to keep you late.
All right. Thank you. Comments or questions about Article 37? My mistake. I had approved last week that we'd hear from Chief Achilles on this, which I think is only fair. And so, Chief, if you want to come forward and, and talk, talk about the article, and then we'll go to the mics.
I have the one that Kyle sent you.
Good evening. Steve Achilles, Fire Chief. We're just waiting for IT to put up our couple slides. Thank you. Next slide? Yep? So, we, on behalf of the police chief and myself, we do want to counter some of the discussion on the citizen petitions. I think this both addresses Ms. Faniff's and the one that's coming up next. I think it's important, why the regional dispatch now? There's a number of reasons. We've been working on this for close to 20 months. We bulleted a couple of things that I think are important for the citizens to consider. It's important for the Police Department and also the Fire Department. Ensure timely and accurate assistance to the public. Provide appropriate predictable and sustainable staffing. Improve call processing and unit notification to the best practices. Dedicated emergency communications to responding personnel, ensuring critical information is transmitted. Reduce errors and omissions that occur during multiple and critical incidents. Provide some resiliency and reserve capacity for complex and simultaneous incidents. Reduce delays in receiving additional resources. Maintain a quality assurance program and also provide dedicated credential and experience Why does this make sense? It includes our most utilized fire mutual aid partner, which is Westboro. It also keeps it localized. These are agencies that we use on a regular basis. It also ensures that any of our current employees and those of the other towns will work nearby and will not lose their jobs if we go to an independent, remote, regional dispatch. This has worked successfully over the country and the state, and we're not trailblazers. There are currently 31 regional dispatches in the Commonwealth. The state is funding these projects and they continue to fund regional dispatchs and regional communication centers. In the future, and we know in the next seven years, we're going to have to spend close to $1 million in capital to upgrade our radio infrastructure. Seeking grants for this is going to be very challenging and difficult because, again, the money is moving away from individual towns. And at some point, we would be forced into a regional dispatch if we can't maintain our own. This is the movement of the state. We did outline our timeline in the state's indications earlier in a letter that was put out to the public. Now, I know there's a number of questions on the site, and I'm not, I don't work for EPA, I'm not a chemist, I'm not going to speculate, but what I can tell you is that the site is at 30 Otis Street in Westboro. It is a Superfund site, and it's been under remediation for close to 25 years. The EPA and the DEB have been working on cleaning up the site and monitoring the site over those 25 years. Both the EPA and DEP have approved the use of the site as a regional dispatch center. The contaminant, which was mentioned earlier by previous presenters, is, the contaminant is heavier than water and it is underground 100 to 130 feet. It requires to get exposed ingestion or rubbing the contaminant on one's skin. At the site, there'll be no extra excavation required. We'll be using the current footprint of the existing structure. Other Superfund sites have been used for repurposing, for repurpose, for police stations, senior centers, and recreational open space. And I think it's important to note that there will be, continue to be required monitoring and testing on the site in perpetuity. What regional dispatch is not? It does not relocate the police and fire department outside of Southborough. It does not automatically call another town to respond to an emergency in the jurisdiction of Southborough unless we request it. It does not increase response times to an incident. Actually, it will decrease times for any request that you make. It does not reduce ambulance revenues to the town of Southborough. It does not cost more, even if the state grant funding is reduced, the cost of Southborough, which I'll show shortly, would not impact the facility, and we will not have a dark station. There is a plan by both myself and the police chief on ensuring that there's somebody at the police station and public safety building 24 hours a day. What will regional dispatch do? It will ensure and deliver an appropriate staffing model that is sustainable. It will improve dispatch services and response time to our residents, provide more grant opportunities for capital equipment, be a more cost-effective way to provide more resources during multiple and complex incidents, and will address known liabilities within the current system, specifically dedicated emergency communications officers during emergency incidents and emergency communications. As far as the cost, I think this is important. Also, as, besides your Fire Chief, I am a resident, and it's important that we manage the cost. In-house staffing of two, which would be the minimum requirement that we would need 24 hours a day here in Southborough compared to a regional dispatch where we are leveraging the resources of the communities along with ourselves. In years one to three, an average of close to $1 million a year would have to be spent in Southborough versus going to the regional dispatch. This is due in large part because of the grant funding opportunities that exist from the state. In year four, it would be about $959,000 that we'd have to spend to maintain the staffing of two dispatches around the clock. In year five, about $935,000. I want to, and also note that this does not include that we would require a supervisor and any additional capital which would increase the cost of the town. So, as we move forward, and I know, again, I, I mentioned that the police chief and myself published a letter in my Southborough and on our Facebook pages and our websites explaining the timeline. All along the way, we have been extremely supportive and recognize that we need to improve dispatch services in the town of Southborough, and we feel that this is the best option at this time. And if Select Board Member Malinowski has any, wants to add, she can do that.
Sure. Thank you. And I'll be brief because I know it's late. When the chiefs came to us in August of 2020 and said, "We think we need to look at this. There's an opportunity," I wasn't completely sure that this was the right way to go. And I've been liaison on this for, since inception, and I do think this is the way to go. And I'll just leave you with, with one example on why I truly believe this. So, let's say that you're home with your child and your child's not breathing, and you call 911, and let's say you do not know CPR. The person, we, currently, right now, in dispatch, we have one dispatcher dispatching out. They do an excellent job, but they are only one person. So, you call 911, or let's say me, I call 911, my child's not breathing. Okay, I don't know CPR, so they need to give me instructions on how to do CPR on my child while they're also dispatching out the ambulance to come get my child to the hospital. So, how are they supposed to give me instructions and also tell the duty crew where to go, what's going on? And they, they can't multitask like that. I'm getting put on hold while they're, while they're dispatching that ambulance to come see me. Seconds matter in this profession, and we have our chiefs who are experts in, in this profession. They run the operation every day. That's what we pay them to do. We need to listen to what they are telling us we have a problem and their recommendation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let me just remind you of what I said when we started the meeting earlier this afternoon. Our, our practice is to go to 11:00 PM or later until the article under consideration at 11:00 is completed. So, we will complete this article. At that point, I will ask you what your, what your stomach is to finish the last two. Hopefully, we can do that, and then we're not back here after tonight. Comment or question at the mics on this article? Yes?
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. The chief makes an excellent point about the benefits of a regional agreement, and I think it deserves very serious consideration. The issue is not the benefits of, of regional agreements, it's the fatal flaws, in my opinion, of this particular agreement, most egregious of which is the lack of accountability for the taxes that we will all have to pay. This body has an incredibly 300-year record of generosity in terms of funding government programs. However, this is really a slap in our collective face to simply say, "No, you have no say in how this is funded." That's just a, a no-go for me.
They were there.
Will Warren, 6 Sunrise Drive. I understand that the, the Select Board voted in favor of this, and I would like to hear what their reaction is to the comments that were just made about the taxation issue and the control issue.
Ms. Cook?
The Select Board voted 4-1 to approve the IMA. It was the 1 vote. So, I'm going to explain my position and then ask Lisa to explain the position of the 4. Chelsea's already spoken, so you've heard what.
Wait, 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 wait. Hold on, hold on, hold on. There was a 4-1 vote?
Yes.
And, and you are 1, or you are 4?
I'm the 1.
Let's have 4 go first.
Okay. Lisa?
Thank you. Good evening. So, and again, I'll, I'll speak for me and hopefully my, my counterparts on the board as well. A lot of consideration was given to this. This wasn't something we took lightly. This has been looked at for over 18 months. I, I appreciate the comments that we're hearing tonight from Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Butler regarding an IMA. One of the questions we ask through this process is, what is the normal structure for the IMAs? I know Mr. Butler mentioned Berkshire, and Ms. Malinowski, if I'm not mistaken, Berkshire is run by the, the Sheriff's Department. It is not done within the town structure. So, knowing the potential issues that we had and trying to find a solution to this, and I, and I understand, I don't view this as so much going outside of town meeting. I view this as a safety issue, and this is standard practice for the 31 rec. centers that are currently out there. Mr. Stivers, do you want to add anything to that?
I did vote in favor of this originally, and at that time, I stated that the jury is still out for me on a couple of these issues. One is the Superfund site issue, the other is the, the cost control issue, and Mr. Butler is correct in that it's, as currently proposed, would not be a vote at town meeting. However, for debt, the, any Select Board of a participating community can veto debt being issued by the district. So, that's not as good as town meeting, in my view, but at least it gives the town control from elected officials in that process. And on the budget, again, one of the things that some of us had pushed for in the IMA is that a shorter term for termination of the agreement. Now, the IMA says with six months' notice, we can get out. Our maximum exposure would be a year's assessment there. So, at that point, we would need to go to another regional dispatch facility. So, as, as folks have told, as have mentioned, we've got till June 4, 1st to decide what we want to do. And again, I will continue to look at the numbers in terms of the cost estimates and continue to think about it. So, that's where I am.
All right. Hold on. On the screen and on my, and on the warrant, it says, "Select Board is unanimous." I also am not clear, just from hearing the last two folks talk, which, where are the 4 and where are the 1? This article advises Select Board to get out of the current process. So, are you for the article or are you for the current process? Who's 4 and who's 1, please? I'm sorry.
So, the 4-1 vote I'm referring to, Mr. Semino, is not the vote on this article. The 4-1 vote was the vote on the IMA we took because the grant was due. So, the grant had a deadline of the first week in March. We had to vote. We would not be able to go forward if we did not vote. You had to have three towns to be part of the application. So, that was the impetus for that vote. I am totally for regionalization. I'm convinced. We've done a lot of work, as Ms. Malinowski has said. We've all been down to see a very high-tech one in Foxborough. We have sat with our dispatchers and talked to them about their concerns. So, my vote was not because I don't believe in regionalization. I strongly believe in it. I think we just went too fast, and there are many unanswered questions. My questions are, number one, on the site. We've got lots of room in Southborough. We need to try to get businesses in Southborough. So, I think that putting the dispatch center on a dirty site, regardless of whether, you know, how, how bad it is, is probably not the best decision. So, I want that rethought. I really, we just didn't spend the time really looking at sites. Westboro said, "This is where we wanted," and so that's what we did. I'd like to give Hawkington a chance to come back in it if they'd had more time. They voted 2-3, the Select Board did, not to go forward with it. The, the swing vote was wavering to the very end. So, I think if they had more time, and I've heard this directly from the Chair of Hawkington, I think that that would change. So, we'd have 4 instead of 3. I'm concerned about the costs. We've applied for $12 million as far as a grant goes. The state only has $40 million this year. I doubt if we're going to get the full 12. I don't understand what happens if we don't. We don't have any money that we have set aside to fill in that gap. So, there's just a lot of unanswered questions. But again, we all knew we had to June 1st to rethink that, and we intended to rethink it. So, you know, you can vote the way you want to tonight. We do tend to rethink, we're going to rethink this, we're going to make sure we've got all the questions answered as far as the lease, et cetera, and probably take another vote to formally decide whether to stay in or stay out. So, that's the 1 vote.
All right. So, Ms. Cook, are you in favor of the So Ms. Cook, are you in favor of the passage of Article 37?
No.
Okay. And the rest of the Select Board is? Is that, do I understand that right?
No.
I don't know where 4-1 comes from, then.
The original IMA, like I said.
So I'm just trying to, look, if the person who asked the question is okay with it, then we can keep going. I'm just trying to help them.
Could I, could I, could we hear from the Advisory Committee, please?
Hold on, John.
Their vote was to approve the IMA. It was a 4 to 1 vote.
All right. So Select Board voted 4 to 1 to approve the current IMA. So it stands to reason, then, that they would want this article defeated. Okay. All right. I apologize, but I think it helps the room. Let's, I'm going to keep going at the mics until we have a specific question, John.
Go ahead.
Which way?
Right here.
Patricia Fiori, 10 Winter Street. The way I understand this agreement, or the IMA, is it requires a minimum of three towns. So I think there's one point that wasn't put out there that should be, which is that if we drop out of this, take, exercise the right on June 1st, it does not necessarily mean we will not, at some point, be in a rec with these same towns, or like Kathy just said, with Hawkington additionally. But it would go to say that our town is very unhappy with the issues in that IMA. So my point is that if you agree with anything that Mrs. Fanaf or Mr. Butler brought up, if any one of those items gives you a cause for pause, you need to vote in favor of this and have them rethink the entire agreement.
And I would, that's a good place for me to note, by the way, that this article, this petition, is advisory, small a. And so, you know, this article passes, then your, the will of town meeting is known to the Select Board, but it is not, you're not, you cannot impose an action on the Select Board via this article. This is an advisory article. Over here, please.
Heath Wittis, 32 Bigelow Road. You say small a, but it's a big deal. So everybody, anybody that doesn't know me, I'm a sergeant on the Police Department, been on the Police Department for 26 years. We've always operated with our dispatch center in-house, and we've never had the need to expand any further as far as looking to join with other communities due to funding. Would there be a possibility that dispatch could be expanded in the future in-house? Yes. Regional center for us just doesn't work. The reason I'm speaking to this now is our article, Kyle Davinson and myself, is next, but it doesn't look like we're going to get to that. So I just have a few points I want to make, and especially towards this article that we're supposed to be speaking on. Now, I wasn't going to say anything. I was going to keep it brief. Unfortunately, the fire chief stood up and snuck in there his little presentation.
There's no sneaking.
Well, when it came before us, there's things in there, almost the entire thing, that's inaccurate. And I'm going to give everybody here a little bit of sight into the real deal. I'm not going to sit here and try to sell something to these people. I'm going to be retiring in two years and seven months, so I'm not going to be operating under a regional dispatch system. So I really have no skin in the game in terms of that. However, I'm going to continue to live in this community. So because of that, that's why I'm here, and that's why I'm speaking, because I know that I don't want to walk into my $20 million building that we paid for. Everyone remember that? 20 million, we're still paying, so remember that one? And walk into that building and walk into, we're just talking brick and mortar cost, if you want to, on the dispatch center, of approximately $1 million between just the building of it and just the radio system we had. Tonight, the fire chief, who, can I just let everyone know, the fire department doesn't pay for dispatch. We do. Why does we continually have to hear the fire chief speak on this when it's the police department's dispatch? I don't know. Fire department doesn't like it, get your own. So here we are. We walk into this building. Here's a beautiful new dispatch center. Who's in there? We don't know. Oh, the chief and I have talked about it, they say. We've talked about making sure somebody's there for people to meet with, to speak to. Who are these people? How is it that I was a union rep for 15 years and just dumped that back in December because I didn't want to deal with any of this anymore? And at no point were we brought in as police officers, and at no point were the dispatchers brought in and asked, "What do you think?" No point. Is that concerning to anyone? Dispatch, why would dispatch not necessarily matter to a chief of police or a chief of a fire department? Why? Because the reality is, they're not the one talking on the radio. They're not the one looking for help. They're not the ones looking for direction. They're sitting in an office figuring out the best way to manage within a budget. That's what they're doing. And then they were presented tonight as experts. Yes, experts, possibly when they were on the road. Now they're experts at administrative tasks. And what happens is, when you're an expert with administrative tasks, sometimes you lose sight of what you're doing and why you're there. Everything I do is for this community. And me speaking tonight is to let everyone here really just know what we're talking about. And what we're talking about is two administrators that got an opportunity from the state to get monies and to lighten their load. In terms of the police department, we have 20 police officers. We have five dispatchers. Dispatch, like I said before, and I don't mean to repeat myself, are part of our team. They are part of our police department. We're decreasing the force, because I consider them part of our force, by 20%. And in doing so, what does that do? Lighten the load of two administrators that now get to do 20% less and make the same money. Sorry to say it like that, but that's fact. And sometimes fact is ugly. In addition to that, what you're doing is talking about reducing the services which are provided to the community. The services that are provided to this community that we paid for, that we were sold when this new building was built, and they also brought up the fact there's going to have to be a radio upgrade, and they're going to talk about how much that's going to be and how much we can save by doing this. Well, it was Kathy at the beginning of this town meeting in the state, we shouldn't be chasing grants. So in this case, we shouldn't be chasing grants. That money that it's going to take to upgrade the dispatch center was already explained to us, was already understood when we voted on that building. So all they're doing is talking about old stuff, making it new. We already knew we had to spend some money. There's nothing really new here. In terms of, again, walking into that station, nobody being there, that's not something I'm interested in doing, and I don't think it's something anyone here should be interested in doing either. I think Kyle Davinson's going to speak in regards to what that means. I'm going to give him an opportunity to do that, and I'm going to give everyone else an opportunity to speak. There is no reason for us to go to a regional dispatch. And if you're saying it's just for money, well, then unfortunately, you're not doing your jobs as select people. This should have been brought to the people. This should have been brought for a much broader, larger discussion than we're having, even going to have here tonight. The fact that this wasn't brought to the people, here I sit as a resident, sitting in my seat going, "How do you think you're going to make that determination, make such a big leap without letting us talk about it as a group?" You can sit there and say you had meetings, you had selectmen's meetings, you had a study done, a study which was with seven towns, which is now whittled down to three. And in regards to Hawkington, don't believe that. Don't get fed that one. I don't know if you've ever met the union rep from Hawkington on the dispatch. Yeah, she's not going to let Hawkington jump back in. So we're down to three towns again. So what's the savings, really? I think right now, we're at about a time in this whole debate where it really seems like now it's about saving face. We voted for it. We're in this agreement. Let's do all we can to make sure this thing goes through. It's kind of like the park. So here we are. I'm telling you, I'm the guy that works for you. I'm the guy that's out there doing it. I'm telling you this because this is what's real. If you want, I could put together a presentation with inflated, talking about $1 million for us to continue with dispatch. Untrue. In the 26 years I've been a police officer in this town, we've needed help in dispatch four times, where it's been a critical incident, four times. Hear that, everybody, four times. They're trying to make it sound like the sky is falling. We can operate how we operate, how we've been operating, perfectly fine. If you want to update dispatch, let's talk about maybe putting one on, let's expand, whatever you want to do. Let's do it here. We're not that desperate. We need to go and jump in with a town like Westboro, which is eventually going to be a city, I don't know what happens then, and then Grafton. What are we doing, scratching at little crumbs? You know how, we will play such second fiddle to Westboro as we did, because we used to share a jail diversion program person, which would help us, a mental health clinician. And then when Westboro decided they didn't really want to share that anymore, they just took it away. Yeah, they ought to be great to work with. Good call. Bad move. And in regards to even suggesting we put somebody on a site that has been, was, or is, whatever it might be, a superfund site, is insulting. I don't care that they say that they've tested wells over the past however many years. Wells, 100 feet down? What happens when that first bucket hits the ground and they're like, "Oh, shoot, we didn't see this"? Money, 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 to be into something we don't want to be in in the first place. Please, everybody, look at me. I've got nothing to gain here, is my whole point. Zero. I'm telling you the truth. This is such a bad idea, it's nauseating. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Over here, please.
Blair Sutherland, 139 Parkerville Road. In deference to my neighbors and friends and my colleagues in Public Safety Communications, I want to just speak to the, my experience with regional communication centers. I certainly recognize that there has been concerns raised tonight about the location in Westboro. I think there is some merit to ensuring that we all are comfortable with where a regional communication center may be located. But overall, I just want to say, my entire career has been in public safety communications. I've been a part, I am now retired. I was a part of the 911 Commission for more than 20 years. I ran the state police communication centers, which operated five regional centers throughout the state, mostly in central and western Massachusetts. I've seen extraordinarily excellent and successful regional communication centers for communities that do it the right way. A regional communication center among municipalities presents some additional challenges that need serious consideration, and I believe that the IMA addresses many of those, many of those points. Something I want to just say is, I've been to a lot of these kinds of hearings, both small and large, in the course of my career. They are often peppered with a lot of emotion. Change is difficult. Certainly, our dispatchers here in Southborough deserve support. Because a regional communication center is implemented, does not mean that our local dispatchers are going to lose their jobs, but it certainly represents a change in the way regional, the way 911 is conducted. My experience has been, when you have a multiple towns working together, or a county that brings together communities, you have more opportunity for better training, better, best practices, and frankly, more eyes and ears on your phones and when you're calling for 911, and a more professional, a more professional environment for the dispatchers. So I guess the other thing I would just want to share is, having participated in many 911 Commission meetings, the state very much supports regional communications. They've made grants available. That's why this town, I think, is looking to move in that direction. There is money available. I can also share with you that, in my experience, the state is beginning to slowly but surely close down on the opportunity for smaller regional centers, and instead, they are building some of their own larger centers in other, in other parts of the state. As a matter of fact, they're looking at one in Milford right now. Here's my point. If there's concern about losing local control among the potential for a three PSAP, a three community town, then if the opportunity is lost in the future to move to a, or to go with a regional center, if the choice is not made available for the town to go to a smaller center and they get absorbed into a larger center, if you think there's not a lot of control in the three-town, I can tell you for sure, because I've seen it, there's the whole notion of being a small fish in a very large pond. I, I, I think, thank you for the opportunity to share. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Over here, please.
Mike Pajani, 123 Middle Road. I'd just like to say a couple of things. First of all, we've had to use, on certain occasions, the police and fire at my residence for my wife's grandmother, and they were outstanding. I've never heard a complaint about the jobs they do. Secondly, I'm retired from the state, State Reclamation Board, specifically mosquito control, but we had a lot of training and seminars in hazardous waste sites. In fact, during the winter, a lot of our jobs were freeing up streams, ditches, and areas. And believe me, like in the town of Hope Dale, we got into one, it was down behind the old steelworks. It was a hazardous waste spot. You do not want to put people on an area such as creosote contamination or any of that stuff doing a job. I don't care what they say, if it's safe for this or safe for that. We dealt with it when I was working there, and it's not something to just, you know, brush off and ignore. So as far as I'm concerned, keep it in the town. It works. It's not broke. Don't fix it. Thank you.
Okay. Over here.
John Thorburn, 1114 Madison Place. Some of you people know me. I served on the Western Fire Department for 42 years, 27 years as their chief. We addressed this regional concept in Western and decided not to do it. The problem with the current dispatch center can very easily be fixed, but it costs money. The biggest problem, oh, and incidentally, when I retired, I dispatched here for 11 years in the fire and police. I have experience in there. I know what it is. The biggest problem is that we have, as has been spoken here before, one dispatcher. In the old building, we used to have the police officers in their rec restroom right behind the dispatcher. So when you got a 911 call, one of them would come out and stand right beside you. And when he heard the address, he'd start his people going before you'd be taking the information. They threw on us medical emergencies, which we have a nice flip graph that we can address any emergency known unto the sun with directions, like someone said, a CPR or whatnot. But that's one person, and they have to give it, give those directions. They don't put them on hold. I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but it shouldn't happen. But that one person is not safe for this community. It's not safe for the fire or the police officers. I would have some suggestions. Number one, which costs the most, is hire another dispatcher around the clock, although I don't think you need one, an extra one from midnight on. And the other suggestion is, the fire and police chief have enough to do with their own departments. They handle primarily personnel matters. That's the biggest thing as a chief, personnel matters. Why not hire a supervisor, another, another department head, so to speak, that would supervise the communication center? Take that headache off of the fire and police chief. They have a complaint, they can come to him. And I understand, I know the fire chief has legitimate complaints. In my opinion... In my opinion, whatever building the dispatch center is in, the other department has complaints. If the fire had the dispatch center, they'd probably be complaining about the police department. But it's, it's very, and there's a good working relationship between those two departments, believe me. But we have local control, which we can solve by spending the appropriate money. I worked in there for 11 years. In my 42 years in the fire department, I can honestly say that I was never really afraid. Working in the police department, when a police officer would call in and say he's got a car stopped on Route 9, occupied times four, I always waited to hear the gunshots. Those men that are out there in that police department are facing every day more and more chances of something going wrong. One dispatcher in that center is not going to handle. If you talk about when there's multiple incidents, one person isn't going to handle it. But as far as the fire goes, there's a 10 card, mutual aid card, that all they have to do is call the mutual aid center in Ashland, and they take over the dispatch. They dispatch all the initial equipment, whatever you call for, they dispatch it. But my point is, I think to maintain local control with, and I believe really sincerely that the town should have the vote on that, how much they spend for it. The state will give you three years grant, they'll come up with a three year pay for everything, and then the next thing you know, you're paying for it. And, you know, what our share will be is unknown at this time. But I really highly recommend that we keep it in Southboro and we add the resources that we need, bite the bullet, pay the money, bring it up, so that it's a lot safer than it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
Peter Faniff, 6 Maple Street. I just have a few questions I'd like to ask the table sitting up in front row. By show of hands, can you show me how many of you have a scanner in your home that listens to the day-to-day operations of these two departments? One. So here we are tonight, we're trying to make a decision on what's the best interest of the town, and you don't know what they do. I sit here and I read the annual report. I see everything in this annual report except anything about the police dispatchers, which is pretty disheartening. The reason I'm saying this is I gave 16 years of my life, or my service, to the town of Southboro as a member of the fire department. Took me six years to get hired full-time. The six years prior to getting hired full-time, I was a public safety dispatcher for the city of Worcester. When I left the city of Worcester, I became a dispatcher in Marlboro. On my days off, after getting hired full-time for the Southboro Fire Department, I was a dispatcher for Worcester EMS and New England Lifelight. So one thing I do know is public safety dispatch. On top of that, when I left the town of Southboro, I became a full-time firefighter in the town of Foxborough, which is one of the facilities that you visited. I'm sure you went to visit the beautiful center that they have, which is very nice. They have state-of-the-art equipment. But at any time, did you go and talk to the police officers at the Foxborough Police Department, the firefighters in Mansfield, the Norton Police Officers, the Eastern firefighters, and ask those people how they felt now that this has been implemented? Because I know talking to the people, their particular feelings. But it's one thing to get one side of the coin and not the other. My other concern was, being in Foxborough at the time that they were developing their regional dispatch center, I unfortunately saw dispatchers lose their job, because they all had to reapply for their positions under this new system. And anybody can say they're going to be guaranteed their position, but when you lose control, you lose control. And I saw this firsthand. I saw two individuals, it was almost 20 years, at the Foxborough Police Department as communication specialists, have to make a decision. And then another two had to go start all over, lose all of their seniority at different towns. So you really need to think about what is in the best interest of this town. I know I left the town from the fire department, but I still reside here, and I still feel it's very important that we maintain this control under our own roof. When we went to look for funding for the public safety building, I specifically got up and asked Chief Paulus if he was ever going to take the position on researching a regional dispatch center. And at town meeting, on town meeting floor, he said no. Yet here we are, five years later. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, same microphone, please.
Hello. Kyle DeVincent, 82 Newton Street. Little background about me, I'm one of your dispatchers here in town. I've worked for you for 12 years. My family has been in town since 1912. I'm a fifth-generation townie, if you will. So there is a lot of passion when I'm speaking here tonight to everybody. Currently, the dispatch now has a dedicated staff. There are trained standards. We do have emergency medical programs in place, and a lot of the information that was presented is actually false. And I hope that we're going to get to extend time, because we have actually conducted interviews, and we do have public records requests in our next presentation. It does not improve response times. Like I said, we have interviewed different centers, officers, and things like that. And if anything, it makes them longer. Everyone here has a smartphone. Before you vote on this, Google, "Hope Dale Dispatch." They were sold the same bag of goods that you're, you know, trying to be sold tonight, and they have pulled out of it. The state has taken their computers, so they can never get their computers back, but they still have a dispatch there. That's essentially what would happen if you guys voted for this tonight. As far as I'm concerned, right now, it's about $350,000 to run it now. You guys put on an inflated price, close to a million. I don't know how you guys get that. It's 350 now. You double it, you don't even get close to that. Right now, you guys are just driving fear into everyone here. There's multiple redundancy plans in place. And speaking about this, if it did go forward, me as a town employee, I would lose all my benefits, all my vacation time, all my sick time, I'd have to reapply for a job, no seniority, nothing. Thank you.
All right, same microphone. They were there.
Hi, Sherri Wittes, 32 Bigelow Road. For those of you who don't know me, I used to be on the Conservation Commission, I was the former Conservation Director for the town of Westboro, and I currently work for the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. I'm kind of an environmental nerd. So my question to the select board is, how many of you have actually been on this site and in this building? Oh, okay. Have you been in the building, Chelsea? So, based on what you saw on the site and in the building, the EPA and the DEP have determined that this is an allowed use for that building?
Yes.
And did they do that with using the soil groundwater management plans and the healthy soil safety plans as a part of the notice of agreement of non-use limitation?
So I'm not an environmental geek. So I do not, I'm not, I am not in a position to answer that question.
Okay, fair. So I guess my, my problem with this is that I was in the town of Westboro for a very long time, almost nine years. I've been at the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee meetings. I've seen them struggle with what to do for this site. They've had a lot of discussions. The non-use limitation agreement, sorry, the notice for non-use limitation agreement basically gives us a guideline as to how the town of Westboro should use this property within the parameters of it being a superfund site. This site will in perpetuity have groundwatering twice a year to see that it doesn't move the exposure. It also is going to have dinapple, it's dense non-acrous liquid, removed from the site, I think from May to November, every year in perpetuity. This site is never not going to have contaminants. So we're proposing to put a regional dispatch center there, because Westboro needs to find a use for this site, and it's a fabulous use. This site has no power. This site has one bathroom that I'm not sure has running water. How are you going to keep people who are going to physically be there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, from here on out, in a site? It's a poor use of this site, and we're going to get roped into it. That's more what I see this vote being about. If we want to discuss regional dispatch, then the next vote, I have a whole lot of opinions about that, but when we look at Westboro trying to put this site as regional dispatch, they're going to do it. The police chief and the fire chiefs over there are lovely people who I would call friends. They're, they've got a plan, they're going to implement it. Whether we choose to have an opinion or not, they're going to override us.
Thank you. Over here, please.
Kelly Roney, 2 House Court. I'd like to move the question.
Mr. Moderator, if, I'd like to be in line if I could, before, before we do that, because we've had a lot of chances to speak.
Well, go ahead, John. Go on down to the mic then, and I'll, Kelly, there's one behind you who's been waiting, and I, you know, I'll afford him that liberty.
Moving the question in general is just a signal that
I understand.
We've had it, so that's fine.
I understand. Hopefully, we're about to hear something new and different.
It is, it's getting back to the warrant. It's a quick question, because I don't think it's been discussed tonight. So what happens if Southboro pulls out?
Okay, so, so I'll allow the select board to answer that, but it's a good time to review the procedural posture here, which is that this article requests that the select board pull out of the agreement. It does not require, it can't require the select board to do that. That being said, if the select board were to pull out of the agreement, the question is what happens?
So the grant has been applied for, and the state 911 generally looks for town, three towns to go into a rec together. However, if you look at the map, which we didn't present tonight, of recs in the state, there's a big gap in our area, and there is a large desire to have a rec in this area. And so I do not know if the state will still continue with awarding that grant to Grafton and Westboro. There's another rec that is, has been newly formed, that is also only two towns, and they did grant it to that. So there definitely has been cases. If, if we pull out, then we will have to figure out what we're doing in the next step, and a Plan B for mitigating any risk that we have today.
All right, for those that don't know, by the way, the acronym REC, I believe, is Regional Emergency Communication Center. That's, that's when you hear the word REC is what's being said. All right, Mr. Butler, last word.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, a great many comments tonight have been spoken, as though with this vote, you need to decide whether you want a regional communication center at all. And I would merely like to point out that this particular warrant is, and our, Mrs. Faniff and my comments on it were much narrower than that, and this warrant is much narrower than that. It merely says that the existing document is fatally flawed. It stipulates a superfund site as the location, and it strips this body of its taxation authority. The next warrant, which by law we must get to sometime, is your opportunity to vote up or down on regional dispatch itself. So if you agree with Mrs. Faniff and I that this particular site should not be utilized, and this particular IMA is fatally flawed, you might want to consider narrowly voting for this warrant, and then make up your mind about whether you want to have regional dispatch at all on the next warrant, which sometime or another, this town meeting, either tonight or later, must deal with. Because this is a narrow, this is a narrow warrant about this IMA, the next one is your chance to vote about regionalization of dispatch as a whole. Thank you.
All right. So Article 37, Mr. Butler's correct, Article 37 is, is, it requests that the, the, the select board withdraw from the current agreement. It doesn't say anything about long-term whether we do regional dispatch or not. It's simply to say the current agreement, we want to withdraw from the current agreement, and it informs the select board of that. It doesn't, can't compel the select board to do anything. But that is the gist of Article 37. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 37, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right? The motion carries. At this point, we have two articles left. 38, which is about regional dispatch generally, and 39, which has to do with how the Public Works Planning Board gets appointed. Frankly, my preference is to, is to see how fast we could power through them while still giving them the attention they deserve. I'm sorry, what?
I'm fast.
I can't, I can't, please stand up and go to a mic.
I said Article 39 will be fast.
I've thought that about a lot of things tonight. Including, including Mr. Hegarty's, of all things. So, do we, by the consent of the hall, do we want to keep going and move to Article 38?
Yeah.
All right, all right. Article 38, then. Mr. DeVincent.
Do I just read the warrant as printed, or?
What's the motion, Jason, that we have for him? Hold on a second, Kyle.
I move the article.
Name and address, please.
Kyle DeVincent, 82 Newton Street. I move the article as printed in the warrant.
Receive a second?
Yes.
All right, Mr. DeVincent, go right ahead.
Heath is going to be presenting.
All right.
Oh, that's perfect. Heath Wittes, 32 Bigelow Road. So I think you've heard enough from me, so I'm going to try to stick to the, the slides that we have here tonight, and then just open it up to questions. Yep. Jay, are you going to be able to go through those for me? Or do I have to press a clicker? That's, that's really high-tech for me.
Yeah, it's right there.
Okay. So the disadvantages, in addition to everything that you've already heard, there's no safe haven. Dispatch is designed to be a location for safety and security for anyone in need of assistance at any time of the day. We have some examples of, of what we might mean by that further on in the slideshow. We lose the important relationships among members of the police department, fire department, TPW, and members of the community. That's something that, that ties right into talking about walking into that building and having nobody there. I think you know what that means. I don't think I need to break that down for the people here in the audience. Anyone who's still remaining, I appreciate you being here, and I think you know what I'm speaking of. The townwide knowledge is lost. We go to a regional dispatch center, what happens is, in terms of safety for our police officers, we have, we have a habit of, for example, if there's a complaint down at Fitzgerald's General Store, and we're dealing with a disorderly person there, which happens quite often because of, it is a T-stop, you know, we, there's been times where I've even called out there and you've said, well, I'll be off at Fitz's, and you run out of the car and you deal with whatever it is you have to deal with. Well, we do that too, at a regional center, they're going to have no idea where we are, what we're talking about, looking for clarification, and that is going to be something that now our lives are at further risk, and it's, once again, unnecessary. Again, you know, further on the slide, so I can skip right past it, we took some data of how many calls that come into that, to dispatch. Are they walk-ins or are they calls? The walk-ins. So just in walk-ins, on an average in a week, there's 20 walk-ins. So those 20 walk-ins, and as we all know, what's the biggest concern here in Southboro? Traffic, right? So So, we are directed to do traffic assignments and traffic is what we do. Anyone who drives through this town knows that there's always a cruiser lit up somewhere because this is the main concern, the main focus of, of our police department. So, now, we're also taking away the ability for someone just to walk into the police station, maybe have a question quickly answered. It's not going to happen now. Now, you have to call an officer off the road and it could be for something very simple. It could be paperwork, it could be submitting a license to carry, it could be a very simple question that could be answered by dispatch and taken care of. As it stands now, I mean, as it would be if we went to regional dispatch, that would all change and we'd be spending all our time running back and forth to the police station and not being out on the roads where you folks want us to be. Again, here was the original feasibility study, feasible-ability study. And now, what it looks like now. I'll go back. So, this is what everyone was excited about and this is what we're in now. Not very exciting. Not a big savings, doesn't make any sense. I think I made my point with the public safety building and the cost. Kyle talked about the, the continued costs that come down the road and when we talk about grants provided by the state, the state is currently dangling the grant carrot to every community in the Commonwealth. When we're talking about maintaining a dispatch center, and I think there's somebody here from the state, too, I'd love for him to stand up, that'd be fun. So, what, what they do there is they, they give you the carrot, they say, "Here's a grant for you, we're going to help you set up this dispatch center, it's going to be a wonderful thing, you guys are going to love it." Now, again, behind the curtain is, the state doesn't care about our community, period. And I'm just being real. In terms of dispatch, they don't care. The state is required to maintain our dispatch center. That's what they don't like. They want regional centers, not for greater safety, not for a, more service provided to, to those that need dispatch services. It's nothing more than fewer PSAPs means less work for those that have to oversee these centers. So, they have people who come to meetings like this and they tell you about these wonderful grants and these wonderful things and these buildings they'll help you build and all of these things, which when it all comes down to it, means nothing to us in this community, but means everything to them. So, it's all about selling it. Let me sell it, let me sell it, let me sell it. We sell it to you and then, like we just discussed earlier, down the road, when they forget about us because they're so happy we're stuck in a regional system, because if we ever want to leave, yeah, you have the option to leave, but you have to go jump into another one. Jumping into another one? I'd love to see how that works. It's just not realistic. This was so rushed into and, again, behind the curtain, this was something that Chief Paulus loved, loved the idea. And I felt bad, actually, bashing my chief and saying that he was looking to do less work. I don't necessarily think that's what he was looking to do, however, Chief Paulus was. And I say it not to be rude, I'm being honest. When I have a man like that stand in front of me and tell me he's so excited that he no longer has to deal with dispatch, that's what you had from that fella. Well, buy to him. We talked about walk-ins. Citizens will no longer be able to walk in, request, submit various forms such as license carry applications, operator accident forms, vacation checks, burglar alarms, registrations, RMV forms. Again, you walk into a lobby, you're faced with a telephone. Once again, I have no skin in the game, I'm going to be out of there, I'm never going to see this. However, I'm going to be living here and I know if I need something at my police station, I don't want to walk into that grand lobby with who even knows what we pay for that inlay in the floor that talks about the police department and fire department, only to be greeted by a phone on the wall. Then I pick up the phone on the wall and say, "Excuse me, mister or misses that knows nothing about our town, can you get me a cop over here, I have a question?" Makes no sense when we can utilize the dispatch, not only for communications, but actually helping us with some of these administrative functions. Multiple people dispatching, multiple towns, substantial room for error. This translates to slower response times, important information slipping through the cracks, safety concerns among our first responders, personnel, and residents. Know this, it's going to be sold that if you have a regional center, that there's going to be more people there to provide a greater service. What we're not going to be told is the minimums. So, for example, in a regional center, say it goes to Westboro, there's a regional center and they, they're going to tell you and it's going to be sold that there are going to be eight people on at the same time. Now, I'm making that number up. However, I'm not making up a number when I'm sure the number of actual staffing is going to be somewhere around four is the minimum. And I might even be high on that, but say four. Now, we have one of these incidents that I'm sure the fire chief would love to come up here and talk to you about, real, you know, that big incident where the sky is falling and when that incident happens, what are we going to do? We're going to play second fiddle to the bigger town. Even if we got equal distribution of dispatch services, those services would still be one and a third, is that what it'd be? Or one and a quarter. So, what would we be gaining? Nothing. Because I'm telling you right now, we would play second fiddle to the bigger town in a major incident. So, you have a big storm, Westboro's going to have a lot bigger problems than Southboro and they're going to have to take precedence. So, therefore, if anything, we've just done ourselves no favor and we're in a place that we're actually behind where we would have been if we had our dispatch center where you could have a police officer or firefighter assist, which is something that could be accomplished with training police and fire in dispatch to help in those situations. Again, four situations in 26 years, that they could jump in and help. However, fire chief, police chief never came to the police union, never came to dispatch union, and I don't know what they did with the fire union, and said, "Hey, why don't we do this? We need a fix." And we put us in place, I'm sure we'd be more than happy to jump in and help, put in place until we can get up to where we need to be with dispatch. And all it comes down to is they don't want to have to ask for the money. Well, okay, well, let's talk about how we get there. Maybe it's a little at a time, maybe it's not. But leave it to the people. Let everyone here decide where we're going with that. Anyone that does not have children in the school system here, what do you pay for? Police, fire, and DPW. That's it. And senior center. Police, fire, DPW, and senior center, okay? That's what you pay for if you don't have children in the school. So, this is a big decision that affects you and that's where your money goes. And also, understand, dispatch, what does dispatch do? Police, fire, and DPW. So, it's, I apologize that I'm getting so emotional about this and I, I wanted a more professional presentation, but I also wanted you to see my honesty and I wanted you to see really what this is. I didn't want to come here and grandstand, I did not want to come here and, and present in a way that I felt like it was saying anything to you other than the facts. So, there it is and I, and I apologize that I've turned this into a mess possibly, but I'm giving you all I have and what I'm giving is the honesty. So, currently, we have, and just like Kyle was talking about when he spoke from the floor, these are our dispatchers. Dave, he's a retired Army veteran, dispatched in Southboro since 2000, grew up in Southboro, special police officer. Kyle, criminal justice degree, special police officer, communication supervisor. We've talked about having a communication supervisor there, just so everyone knows, we have one. Grew up in Southboro, dispatching in Southboro for 12 years. Stephanie, 10-plus years of management experience at her prior job, dispatching for three years in Southboro, grew up in Hopkinton. Three years in Southboro as a dispatcher, but let me tell you something, you thought she was a dispatcher for 10 years. She's wonderful. Brittany, dispatching for five years between Southboro and Hopkinton, grew up in Hopkinton, veteran of the Army National Guard, finishing up her bachelor's degree in forensic psychology. Brittany left Southboro, went to Hopkinton, left Hopkinton, came back. She came back, why? Because she knew it was a good place to work. Christina, she's new, she dispatched for Marlboro Police for 11 and a half years, registered EMT and works as an EMT part-time and has a communications degree. Don't know much of her. I, I work with her occasionally, she works the overnights, but she is more than thrilled to be here. And again, left Marlboro, 11 and a half years, seniority, vacation time, all that, to come and work in Southboro. Here's, here's another issue that, or the big issue that we need to think of. You vote for regional dispatch, so what basically you're doing is say, "Dave, Kyle, Stephanie, Brittany, Christina, thanks, but we might be able to save a buck here. So, I appreciate your service, but here's what we're going to do for you. We're going to let you reapply for your jobs and good luck. And if you happen to get a job, because it is not guaranteed," I don't like the fact that there was sold that these people are guaranteed jobs. Show me it in writing and sure, okay, there's a different story. But they, like Kyle said, they have to reapply for their jobs, lose seniority, and furthermore, all these people that I'm talking about right here, if I really wanted to, I would have brought them all here and they would have described to you why they like to and why they want to work in Southboro. Someone who's going to come to me tomorrow and say, "Hey, Heath, I know you've been a cop for 31 years." Yes, I've been a cop for 31 years, 31. And you come to me tomorrow and say, "Hey, just so you know, we're going to go regional police. You're going to go over to Framingham. Don't worry, you're going to get to apply for your job, you'll probably get your job, but you know, you'll have one." Someone tells me I want to go work in Framingham, I'm going to tell them I'm retired. I'm getting out of there. I'm not working in Framingham. And there are many people, and I can't speak for any of them, but if somebody told me that and I saw this coming down the road, I'd be out of here. I'd go look for another small community because that's where I want to work. There's something about working in a big city that you're sitting behind a desk and you're just going all night long on a radio, whereas in a small community like this, nobody does when you're a dispatcher, you get to know the people. You're the face of the town, you're the face of the police department, you're the face of the fire department, you're, you're what people see when they walk into that facility. That's what we have, that's what we like, that's what we've always gone with. To change that for no other reason than money is, is, is just, it's just so unfathomable. I can't even. My, an issue I have that I have to just bring up quick, this is all based on money. There is no safety issue here, there, that doesn't exist, that's make-believe. Selectmen are tasked with watching over our finances, making sure we're in line, reviewing budgets and all that, absolutely, right? The second part of their job is looking out for advancing our quality of life as people, as residents of this community. This is what they've missed on this one. They fell for the dangling carrot and at the direction of two administrators that do not have their finger on the pulse of the needs of this community. Do not, clearly, because if they did, we wouldn't be sitting here right now and we wouldn't be having this discussion. Plain and simple, those two administrators should have just come to us as people, explained to us the issue with staffing, to get us up to where we need to be, ask us for the money, or at least come up with, why don't we as a group come up with some sort of plan of how we get there? Not go for the quick, easy fix. Quick, easy fix is that. Quick and easy, that's all it is. Examples of things that happen in Southboro. In our station, in our station, officer stabbed and collapsed out front on the walkway into the station. The dispatcher saw the officer get stabbed in the lobby, she was able to dispatch the fire department immediately to provide medical attention to the officer. The officer was unable to give their location, the other officers in the building did not know where he was. Because there wasn't dispatcher in our station, could be the reason Sergeant DeLuca is still around. That's fact. A resident walked in while having a heart attack. The dispatcher was able to dispatch officers, the fire department, there was, there were responders in the lobby almost instantly with an AED. That same person could go into that lobby under a regional dispatch system and you've got a telephone. And I'm sure there's cameras there that the dispatchers could be looking at, but if the dispatchers happen to be dealing with another community because they're busy and maybe possibly miss that person, that's an issue. As you know, with a heart issue, that is something that has to be dealt with immediately and seconds matter. With having somebody in the building, if the dispatcher needed to exit that dispatch center and assist that person, the dispatcher would be able to do that as they are trained with the AED. We had a rolling domestic in a vehicle. A woman was suffering from dementia, was in a vehicle with her husband and she was scared because he did not know who her husband was. She was trying to escape the vehicle while they were driving on the road. The husband was able to drive the station parking lot before she jumped out of the vehicle. Dispatch was able to intervene and allowed the woman to feel safe until officers arrived. Hopkinton, we have, here's one from Hopkinton. Domestic violence victim escaped their abuser. A woman escaped from her boyfriend who was holding her captive in an apartment. When she escaped in the middle of the night, she ran a mile to the police station. When she ran in, she had bruises all over her body and was bleeding. The dispatchers were able to instantly let her into a locked conference room for her safety. The dispatchers were able to let her into a locked room for her safety. These are things that can't get done with regional dispatch. Complaints from police officers in towns with regional dispatch. I'll save that, us, all this? What do you guess? They don't like any of it. How about that? Complaints from the police, didn't like any of it. Information sent out to officers, firefighters on the wrong channels, information gets lost, response times are much slower. The game of telephone is dangerous. When a call comes into our dispatch center, the dispatcher immediately dispatches it out. When you have a regional center, it's got to go into regional, from regional to a local, from the local out to the officers. That's not time-saving. High turnover rate, because what you find, again, in these regional centers are always, have a tendency to lose staff. I'm happy to say that we had that issue, we had an issue where our staffing and, and they'll talk about, you know, staff and it's tough to keep our dispatch center staff. Not anymore. The issue was, we had a police chief that was not very supportive of dispatch. People knew that in surrounding communities. They knew that this was not the place to come to be a dispatcher. That was a known. All you had to do was ask. The pay was not where it needed to be. The pay's been increased, we have new leadership. And again, I apologize to Chief Newell, wonderful, wonderful man, so, and people want to work for him. So, we're where we need to be with that. Perfect example, that person coming from Marlboro with 11 years of experience to come to Southboro to work in a good place. And again, you can sit here and talk about, I know some of you had the opportunity to go visit, as PJ said, that Foxborough Dispatch Center. Again, that's the dangling carrot. The people from the state are going to take you for the most beautiful place they possibly can take you, they're going to show it to you and they're going to go, "Look at how beautiful this is." Let me tell you something, the state's one big used car salesman, that's what they are. They bring you there, don't let you talk to the people that matter and those are the people that are working there. What they do is they put you in touch with another administrator, again, who does not work it day-to-day, so does not understand what's actually happening, and you guys are sold a bag of goods. So, it stinks because, you know, in defense of the selectmen and, and advisory, you're being guided by the people you need to trust and the people you need to trust are those department heads you put in charge. Unfortunately, they didn't do their homework, they didn't check with the police officers, didn't check with the dispatchers, they didn't check with the people who actually use these services.
Hey, Heath, how mu, what are you thinking about?
This is it, this is it. This is it, right here.
Okay.
Promise. What's that? Yeah, this is it. Did a public records request, Franklin Police Department.
Fire.
Fire Department, excuse me, Franklin Fire Department. What's your overall experience with regional dispatch? Moving to a regional center with three other towns has been difficult. They still do not have some of the promised technology center they opened May 1st of 2019. Would you do it again today or take a different route and what would that be? No. We were only brought on to boost the call volume as the state would not provide the necessary funding without our involvement. The project was driven purely for fiscal reasons, yet our share of the current fee structure has us paying significantly more than we were paying for separate fire and police communication centers within our respective police and fire stations by a fire chief that went regional because they were sold the bag of goods. From a command and control aspect, I would still fight against the project today as I personally don't believe that a May Day or emergency situation would be competently handled by all of the dispatchers employed there, meaning the regional center. And if you don't think they're competent, there's nothing you can do about it because you're tied into regional and you have no control. Thank you.
Comments, questions about article, about the article, about Article 38? Comments, questions about article, about the article, about Article 38? Microphone.
James Nichols Whirley, 94 Main Street. I appreciate the very thorough presentation, especially if today we might not take as seriously as we should the needs and concerns of our essential safety officers in town and people who keep us safe. But, but folks, it's past midnight. We already heard very convincingly and very narrowly on a specific regionalization proposal. This warrant article is much more broad than that, and I can only assume that's why advisory committee was unanimous in support of the previous article, but unanimous in not supporting this article.
Oh, oh, just to answer that, we'd never presented to advisory.
No, hold on, hold on. Let them talk. Let them talk.
Well, they voted on it. So, I mean, we'll have a new select board in, in a month and a half. They're, they're the people in charge. I mean, for all we know, there could be a regional dispatch in, in the Southborough Public Safety Building. I think this discloses any opportunity. As a matter of good government, we should dispose of this article. Thank you.
Over here. Stan Michelle, 7th School Street. You know, for those of us that have been here for a long town, a long time, this is a small town. Most of us like the fact that it's a small town. We like to, we used to like to go to the little police station and stick our head in and talk to the officer on duty and say, hey, you know? Or my wife would go there and say, hey, I want you to arrest my husband, whatever. I mean, it was, I, I mean, it was a small town, and, and I think the feeling of the small town sort of goes away when you, when you have a big police station with nobody in it. But, but that aside, I, there are fiscal issues in the town. I think what's driving this is finances, and I think that's something we really haven't discussed through this town meeting. I mean, we've, you know, kind of looked at the budget and said, okay, yeah, we've got a couple of questions on a couple of line items. Let's just approve the budget. But the reality is that there are fiscal issues, and, and I think that's something that the select board is trying to address. And I, I give them a lot of credit for, you know, for doing everything they can to try to control costs. You know, there's the revenue side of it, and there's the, there's the expense side of it. Expenses are growing. I mean, we can see that. We see the budget, we see the numbers. Revenues are shrinking. You know, the commercial side of it is down. The pilot side of it is pretty much nonexistent. And so, you know, something's got to give, and it's going to be up to the select board, I think, to, to figure out how to make that all work. This seems like an effort to, you know, to try to control expenses, but I think what you're hearing is that, that people like the fact that this is a small town where, you know, you can stick your head in the police station and there's actually a policeman there. So I, I don't know. I don't have an answer to that question, but it just seems like that's, that's what this feels like.
All right, thank you. Over here.
Karen Muggeridge, 15 Parmenter Road. I just heard a lot of passion and opinion, and I very much appreciate that. What I haven't heard is a reason to limit options for this community going forward. I don't see any reason, without knowing what we're looking at in the future, to instruct, and I realize as a citizen's petition, it's non-binding, but to instruct our elected and appointed officials to not explore something. So I would urge everyone here to vote against this article. It doesn't eliminate regionalization. It doesn't make it stay in Southborough, but I think it's important to send the message to our leaders that we deserve their work in exploring all options on our benefit.
All right, same microphone.
Grant Farrington, 58 Flag Road. I'd like to move the question.
No, we got a few people at the mic. Let's, 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 let's play it out. Same microphone, please.
Krista Naker, 28 Flag Road. First of all, I want to thank the presenters for being passionate about their job and the community. Secondly, as someone who's worked in dispatch with regional dispatch, local dispatch, answering service dispatch, I think going regional is a huge mistake. You lose the, like the presenter said, hey, I got to go pick up something at Fitzy's and deal with that over there. You lose that. How many people in this room know White's Corner? Okay. You put that to a regional dispatch, hey, there's an incident at White's Corner. They're not going to know what White's Corner is. So I am in favor of keeping it in the town. Regional, bad idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, same microphone.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. Whether regional is a good decision or a bad decision is not really the point of this article. This article says we shouldn't think about it. This article says we shouldn't explore this. Our taxes are going up 6% this year. We didn't really talk about that. And I, I think it is incumbent on every elected board to review and assess whether we are using the most efficient way to achieve the public services that we need. We can't, it's irresponsible to say, no, you can't think about this. This is a sacred cow. Now, we can have a full and fulsome debate about whether regional is a good idea or a bad idea, and I would encourage that, but we can't simply say, no, this is off limits. That, it, that's not, no way to run a railroad.
Over here now.
Peter Fan of 6 Maple Street. I'll be very quick. There's just two things I want the board to consider when going over some of these options. You regionalize a facility like this, you go from having two sets of policies and procedures with just Southborough to now having six different policies and procedures that all of those people have to cross-learn. My second point of interest is, in the town of Foxborough, when we went to a regional dispatch center, we had female police officers who needed maternity leave. While the dispatch center was in the police department, that was their light duty. When it went to a regional facility, it was a benefit that they lost as police officers, not even as dispatchers. Not that there should be any bias between them, but it's something to consider. Thank you.
All right, same microphone.
Devonna Cardier, 14 John Street. I have a question. You, you were saying that since this is a citizen's petition, this is non-binding? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we as a group say that we vote for this, it's non-binding, right? So?
Correct.
I personally like that we have dispatch in Southborough. I don't know enough about regional, moving to a regional system. I haven't heard enough about it, I have to tell you, and I certainly would like to hear more. And I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote for this. Specifically, it's non-binding. You guys can do what you'd like, I suppose. But I do think that it's important, as somebody said on the other side, I think that it's important that we give the town the option of hearing more about it and providing our voice towards it. Thanks.
All right, and over here.
Lynn McKay, 10 Ledge Hill Road. I know the presentation was all against moving to real, on regionalization, but the actual article says unless it is brought to town meeting. So it's not saying we can't do regionalization. It is just saying, don't do it without bringing it to this group.
Yeah. It's, it's certainly advisory in any form. And frankly, I don't recall the actual motion, it was long enough ago, as to whether that was included. If he read, if he read what you're talking about, then yes, that is the motion.
Right.
That's right, he did. You're right. He did. He did. It's printed in the warrant, so it's in there. Okay? All right. Article 38 requires a majority vote to advise the Board of Selectmen that, well, it's printed in the warrant. So all those in favor, raise your cards. All opposed. All in favor. All opposed. All right? The article passes. Article 39, this Burns Fiori. And this is the last one, folks.
I'll be fast. All you have to do is vote yes, and you can be out of here. Patricia Fiori, 10 Winter Street. I move Article 39 as printed in the warrant, replacing the words Health Department with Board of Health.
All right, is there a second? All right, and so far as this article theoretically may impact the appointing power of the moderator, I'm going to turn over the, the microphone to Mr. Hegarty as deputy moderator, and he's
Good evening. The moderator has asked me to fill in as moderator for this. That requires a vote of the hall. Can I have a nomination from the floor to make me the deputy moderator for this one? Can I have a vote? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Mrs. Berry, the assistant clerk, will handle the clerk's motions for this. Has the select board taken a position on this article? Has the select board taken a position on this article? And what is it, please? Okay. Any other board of committee taking a position on this article? Okay? Thank you. Ms. Fiori, go ahead, please.
The Public Works Planning Board reports to the select board to advise and or assist matters concerning the Department of Public Works and its operations. Given the significant amount of our town budget dedicated to the DPW, the substantial projects we have on the docket now and in the immediate future, as well as the public dissension on some of those projects, this could be and should be an important, effective board. This adjustment to Chapter 447 will change the appointing authority of the Public Works Planning Board to the Planning Board and, as amended, Board of Health. Appointments to this board should be under the auspices of multi-person boards who are stakeholders in the types of projects under the jurisdiction of the DPW. I'm going to give you a little background. This board and its appointing authority were established in 1991 when numerous town departments were combined into the Department of Public Works by legislative act. Currently, the moderator appoints three members of the board, and the planning board appoints two. We are proposing four members to be appointed by the planning board and one by the Board of Health. There are a number of reasons this should be looked at and adjusted. The majority appointing authority lying with the moderator is not appropriate nor the best use of his or her authority. Appointments to the Public Works Planning Board should be from boards that are stakeholders in DPW operations and projects. As a group, planning board oversees and approves a wide range of issues affecting our town's infrastructure. The Health Department is concerned not only with our water, but use of pesticides and chemicals. Whether appointing from within their own group or recruiting outside, both the planning board and the Board of Health have direct interest and experience in issues that may confront the Public Works Planning Board and will choose accordingly. Furthermore, small D democracy should be at work here. We now have the majority appointing authority for this entire board under the pen of a single person versus the consideration, discussion by the boards of multiple interested, invested parties. With the urging of our vote at town meeting, the select board can take the steps to change this by petitioning the state legislature and in addition, potentially take it upon themselves to narrow and define the charge of the Public Works Planning Board so it can provide the select board exactly what they need. Thank you.
Mr. Butler.
John Butler, 4 Davis Road. So basically, I oppose this, and the reason fundamentally is that there's a lot of rigmarole to change this thing because it has to go to a special act of the state legislature to, to make this change because that's how this was created when we abolished the cemetery commissioners and the water commissioners here. And the problem is misdiagnosed with this. The problem is not the appointing authority. The problem is the charter of this group doesn't make any sense. The, the group was created, frankly, look, we wanted to, we wanted to consolidate, and this group, this, this board was created as a SOP to the voters to get them to vote for the consolidation, which required a ballot box action. The charter never made any sense. If it had been the appointing authority that was the problem, or the people on it, at some time during the last 30 years, it would have worked. It has never worked. And so, what, we, we shouldn't, I mean, I, I appreciate the recognition of the problem that's involved, but the diagnosis is wrong. The problem is that the charter, it sits between this and this, and it has never been an effectively functioning board. And therefore, changing this, going through the rigmarole, getting the state legislature to make this change, isn't going to fix the underlying problem because it's the charter, not who does the appointment. And I think that what we should do with this is get rid of it because it, it just is between things, and it, we, we don't have an advisory board for police or an advisory board for fire. We have this one for DPW, and the reason is historical because we used to have, we used to have cemetery commissioners and water commissioners, and it was thought, well, we ought to have something else, but it never has worked. Changing the appointing authority after going through all this and getting a state legislator action is not going to fix the problem. Sometime later, we should fix it by getting rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Ms. Cook.
So, Mr. Butler just took the words out of my mouth, so I agree with everything he said. Ms. Fiori is right. This, this board is a mess, and we need to do something. It's going to be on our agenda very soon. We're trying to get our DPW head hired first. But just one thing to add to Mr. Butler that's new. The charge for this group is to plan, manage, and finance, to provide advice for those three things to the town. It doesn't even refer to the DPW. So it is a mess. We know it, and we will do something about it.
Thank you. Any other comments on this article? Okay, time for vote.
Joanne Pearson, 101 Newton Street. I think either way, the idea that one person, and this should be like across the board in the town, one person is appointing the majority on a board is just a ridiculous situation.
Thank you. Say no other comments. We'll call for vote. All in favor of passage of this motion? Please raise your card. All opposed? Motion fails.
Do I have a motion to dissolve the 2023 annual town meeting? So moved second, all in favor? You guys did great. Thank you very much.